Thank you for joining us for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting, 10:00 AM Wednesday, January 27, 2021. First item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is Citizen Input for items that are not on the agenda. It looks like we do have a request to speak through Zoom. I'm Patrick McCrone. And if there's somebody else attending the meeting, you could use a hand raise function to request to speak. These are three-minute items. Citizen input not on the agenda. Mr. McCrone.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time this morning. I have a few points, and I know I have limited time, so I'll try to cover them quickly. I'm a restaurant owner here on the east side of Bend. I own Rag and Ellie's Pizza in half for 10 years, five in the county, and five in the city. And I just want to express some concerns with regards to the mandates and the restrictions that we've all been experiencing. And I'll cut right to the chase. According to Jason Brandt, the president and CEO of the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association, restaurants, bars, and gyms make up for less than 1% of all COVID cases reported in the state of Oregon. Now, that fact and figure is a little bit, it's probably six, eight weeks older, but still, nonetheless, a pretty amazing low percentage rate for the restrictions that have been put on my group of peers. We restaurants, gyms, and bars have all been closed to indoor seating since before Halloween, yet we still see COVID spikes. I mean, a second grade, I could tell you that the spikes aren't coming from us because we don't have customers sitting down. We've spent thousands of dollars on safety protocols, gloves, masks, Plexiglas, social dividers, social distancing, bleaching. We're bleaching everything from doorknobs to coolers to ballpoint pens that people sign their credit card slips with. We are the control group. I don't think the governor is seeing that. We're seeing an increase of tents because outdoor seating is allowed. But if you take a look at any of these tents, as I have throughout the county, many of them are three, and some of them are four-sided tents, and they're in parking lots. So I don't understand how the governor can explain the fact that tents are safer in an enclosed area, just like my dining room and my peers' dining room, but yet they're on asphalt parking lots. Unlike bleached dining room floors, something that I do with my restaurant every single night. So if the governor thinks that a tent in a parking lot with a ground covering that is typically parked cars, oil drippings, gasoline, petroleum products, is cleaner than my restaurant, then I'd like to have her visit my restaurant. And any day, week, we can go to the big boxes, Costco, Walmart, Safeway, Target. Some of the mask-wearing is being done correctly, some is being done incorrectly, and others, it's not happening at all. So I don't understand how big-box stores, such as the ones I mentioned, can still be in complete operation while guys like me, small business owners, are getting the life sucked out of us by these sanctions. My strong belief is that restaurants, bars, and gyms are the control group. And that's an important term because we are following such a strict guideline, many of us. I can't say for all, but many, many friends that own restaurants are following a very strict guideline with social distancing and disinfecting of our establishments. So I find it very, very difficult to believe that big boxes are cleaner than my restaurant or my peers' restaurants. And finally, when customers come in without face masks, it puts my employees in a very awkward position. Of course, we enforce that, but oftentimes, we are yelled at, scolded, called liberals, threatened at times, and that is not what I want my employees to go through. And I respectfully request that the governor lighten sanctions on bars, restaurants, and gyms. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you're watching the screen, we're still working on which timer and how we're using it, but thank you very much for that testimony.
Appreciate it.
I do have one question. Do you feel comfortable challenging a patron that's kind of bucking the request of wearing a mask as they're coming in or wearing a mask appropriately while standing by?
Absolutely. I mean, I do. I don't, you know, I'm kind of a strong-headed Italian. I kind of don't take crap from a lot of people. I'm a nice guy, but if someone comes in the restaurant and they're threatening, not in a physical way, but in a germ way, my staff or other patrons, yeah, I'm speaking up. I actually have a box of masks that I give to customers that come in that don't have one.
And I'm just kind of advocating for the culture of, you know, during this unknown time, the culture of wearing a mask appropriately, understanding, putting it on and keeping it on kind of straight and square instead of touching it and moving it up and down the whole time. That's the culture of wearing a mask, and if we can, you know, do that, really, that's kind of the tangible thing I would see is reduce the spread. So, thank you very much for the testimony.
Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate hearing from you.
Commissioner Chang may have a statement.
Sorry, I just wanted to thank Mr. McCrone for his commentary, and I want to agree that there are many ways that COVID is being transmitted in our community besides in bars and restaurants, which are currently closed, and that we need to do a better job across our community of controlling the virus and bringing down our cases so that we can safely reopen. COVID is an airborne. It is transmitted through the air, which makes it very difficult to think about businesses where people are going to come in and then, you know, take their mask off when they're eating and drinking. But I definitely wanted to just express agreement that the potential sources of spread of COVID are many across our community and that this is, restaurants and bars are a place where we're clamping down because we can clamp down, and that's not necessarily equitable and proportional to the risk.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang.
Thank you. So is there anybody else with a hand raise feature in attendance? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, one set of minutes.
So move approval of the consent.
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
In chair votes, yes. At this time, action items, item two, COVID-19 update. This is our weekly update. I want to thank people for following this. I know we do broadcast simultaneously on a Facebook Live page, and I think last week, we had a technical difficulty where the meeting was cut in half or whatever, so then the first part wasn't there with the COVID update, and somebody contacted us right after the meeting and said, "I couldn't see the COVID update." So we do know some folks are following this. Please proceed.
Okay. Good morning. I just wanted to make sure that we are streaming.
Oh, yep. Standby. If you have, we have nods, yes, and thumbs up also.
Thumbs up. Excellent. I'm going to share my screen right now. I hope you can see the screen.
Yes.
Okay. Well, good morning, and thank you for inviting us. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadrazodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services, and I also have, I'm joined by Dr. Conway, Director of Health Services. I think he'll be joining us shortly. Many thanks to Jennifer Faith for the data analysis. She's our epidemiologist, and to Morgan Emerson for the messaging. And of course, a huge thank you to our health services staff and community partners for their great efforts in responding to this pandemic, in particular, for helping to set up this very ambitious vaccination rollout, as well as delivering on other important non-COVID services and priorities. I'd like to highlight a couple of our teams, if you allow me. I'd like to mention our Family Support Services and our Women, Infants, and Children teams, who are working with skeleton staff, because a lot of their staff have been deployed to the vaccination rollout. And they're still working very hard to meet the needs of our communities, which unfortunately, given the economic conditions, these needs are even more pronounced today than they were last year. Okay, moving on to the next slide. This particular slide shows the number of new cases by week. Last week, which goes from Sunday to Saturday, of 117 to 123, we had 244 cases reported. We are hopeful that this one-week drop becomes a trend of decreasing new cases that we're going to see in coming weeks. Of course, this is just one data point. We need to see a few data points to determine a trend, one way or the other. Now, as of Monday, two days ago, we had 5,212 cases reported total since the beginning of this pandemic, and 40 deaths. However, since Monday, we've had, actually, since Sunday, we've had 92 cases reported, and unfortunately, one additional death. So the total number of deaths is now 41.
Nahad, I thought I saw in the data released yesterday that we had 70 new cases in Deschutes County for a one-day period. Is that correct?
Yes. So we had, since Sunday, we've had 92 cases, additional cases reported, which are not reflected in this particular slide. So yesterday's numbers are included in the 92.
Well, so we're seeing the daily updates, and I haven't studied this, but after a weekend, on Monday, you see some numbers for a three-day period.
No, that was a one-day number.
On Monday?
Well, yeah, it was.
Well, so, and it's...
On Monday, it was up for a three-day period, but...
No, I get them every day. You can get them.
Well, there's Oregon Health Authority numbers, and then there's the one the county's putting out. So the email from county health had 100-something, and 70 the next day. So I'm just saying, there's different ways we're seeing the numbers. So, yeah, it'd be interesting to understand. Because I understand, Commissioner Chang, you know, I saw a number of 100-something plus 70-something, and now you're saying 90 for...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm just overall really glad that we've had this downward trend, but seeing 70, you know, seeing what I thought was 70 cases just for yesterday made me worry that, you know, the trend is breaking.
Well, that was in one day, because it actually has been down pretty consistently for the last week, amazingly enough. But what I'm wondering about, Nahad, is what about those 400 tests that were done at the fairgrounds? Did we get the results from those? I don't believe we had them at our last meeting.
Yes, we didn't have them at the last meeting, and I'm happy to speak to them.
Because they would be in this week's number, correct?
They would be, the cases would be reported, correct, yes. Dr. Conway, did you want to come in?
Oh, just that as far as public health and epidemiology is concerned, one week of decrease does not represent a trend. If we see a situation that would represent a trend, but a single point connected to two points does not represent a trend. So we're hopeful, but very guardedly so.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we, thank you, Dr. Conway. We covered that point because it's an important point. I think the issue right now is around the numbers that we're seeing. So what we see in this particular slide is last week's number of 244. What we don't see in this slide are cases that are reported on Monday and Tuesday. And Commissioner Chang, you're absolutely correct that around 70 or so cases were reported yesterday. Also, some were reported on Monday, which reflect essentially Sunday and Monday cases, which are reported one day late by OHA, and those are the ones we mentioned. So the 70-plus number is certainly concerning. It could be a reflection of the issues around data and when they're being reported, the laboratory turnaround that goes into it. So there are a number of factors that play into it. So I think perhaps for me personally, I have a better sense and maybe less of a risk for developing ulcer when I look at it throughout the week rather than day by day, because certainly, it's concerning when I see it on a day-to-day basis.
Well, the issue yesterday was actually that we were third. Normally, we are about seventh for the number of cases on a daily basis, because I calculate this every day. And yesterday, we were actually third. I think that's like the first time we've been that high. Only Clackamas and Multnomah had more cases than us. But I'm wondering, how many positives were in that 400, Nahad? Do you have that number for us? Because is that in the 244?
I have it. Do you have it, Nahad?
Go ahead, Dr. Conway.
Well, it's okay. If you have it, go ahead.
I don't have the email in front of me. I remember it was around...
Yeah, it's, so I do know. And out of 349 tested, with a positivity rate of 6.2, there were 21 positive. So that's actually not out of bounds for what we might expect for a community survey. There have been other events organized in a different way that were, had higher rates and lower rates. The important thing is that this was no barrier. Some people could just show up, and they didn't have to be symptomatic or have known exposure.
And speaking of testing, kind of testing opportunities that are, you know, happening or coming up, when is that OSU traces, community sampling, going to happen?
It's, there's still a few wrinkles to be earned out, but it is to happen on, I believe it's Friday and Saturday.
That's what the news said, that it was going to be this weekend.
There's a press briefing this afternoon about it. I'll be just providing some sort of background information at the utility of this sort of active surveillance, but it's OSU and City Redmond's effort, which we're just providing technical support to.
And I think what's important for the community members to understand and appreciate from this particular surveillance exercise is that we're trying very hard to triangulate our data points. So we have the new cases, we have the sewage surveillance, and Dr. Conway's been sort of leading those efforts. We have the trace, and these are all different ways for us to bring the different data sets together and better understand and interpret how this virus is transmitting in terms of its incidence and prevalence in our communities. So moving forward, if you allow me, this slide...
Nahad, I do have a question for you. I honestly hate to bring this up, but I know we had 22 deaths through the end of December 31, 2020. So now, we've had 19 deaths this month so far. Do people normally pass away more in winter months? I know normally, we have the flu, and that's when we see a lot of, you know, people that do fall victim to the flu. Is there anything there because it is winter, or is it just, you know, an accumulation? Because today, or yesterday's number, there were only 19 in St. Charles, which I thought was an excellent sign, and only, I believe, one in ICU.
So Commissioner, Dr. Conway, can I give a quick answer and then maybe bring you in?
Sure.
Thanks. So Commissioner, just a layperson's, perhaps, lens into this. What we see in terms of hospitalization and deaths are basically delays following the cases that we see in our communities. So certainly, we had this huge surge, as you can kindly see in this slide, and then it followed by, and I have another slide which we can show later, it followed by hospitalization, and then unfortunately, deaths follow a proportion of the hospitalized cases, or even non-hospitalized. So that's one factor. Another factor, of course, is around the demographics and who's getting the, who's acquiring the virus, and their age group, their comorbidities, and so on. And that also impacts the rate of hospital admission, as well as succumbing to this virus. Let me give the floor to Dr. Conway to perhaps add.
Actually, I was just going to try to answer your initial question, Commissioner Dare. There is typically, in temperate climates that have seasonality and temperatures, there is typically, and even some tropical climates, there is seasonality to cardiopulmonary deaths, which are often attributed to influenza and other respiratory ailments. So this is not, it's not unusual, and I don't think that it, I'm not sure it's even surprising if this more severe, highly transmissible disease does cause deaths in that same season.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I, sure, sure. Good questions. Thank you. So this slide is on the age distribution of patients. The data are pretty much consistent with previous weeks, as more than half the patients are among young to mid-age adults. We do see, of course, most cases reflected in the young adults of 20 to 29 years old, comprising around a fifth of the total number of cases, or patients. This slide, this next slide shows our testing capacity and demand for testing. It's based on electronic laboratory reports, which we receive each week. We're just basically now honing in on the data since November, beginning of November. And as you may recall, and on community members recall, early December, there was a change in terms of how the reporting was done. It went from total persons to total tests. So the numbers have changed quite a bit. Now, during this past week, we had nearly 4,000 reported tests with a positivity rate or percentage of nearly 6%, which is consistent within sort of the interval that we have seen in the last few weeks. Any questions? No? Okay. Now, moving on to this next slide, we are, here, we're looking at the St. Charles Health System Hospitalization, which is a regional indicator. So the numbers here reflect patients from tri-county region, as well as even other counties, and maybe sometimes, in the past, we've seen from even out-of-state admissions. As of this morning, we have 21 COVID-positive patients hospitalized in the healthcare system, nine of whom are Deschutes residents. As of Monday, ever hospitalized Deschutes residents sits at 180.
As of Monday?
As of Monday.
Well, thank you.
Sure. This is a slide that Commissioner Devon has asked us to add, basically reflecting an earlier discussion we had around the intervals between new cases, hospitalizations, and unfortunately, deaths. Here, we see on the upper part, the case count by week, and in the bottom, we see the average number of daily hospitalization per calendar week at the St. Charles system. Now, this is a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison here, because on the upper bars, we see Deschutes County numbers, whereas at the bottom, as I mentioned earlier, this is a regional indicator reflecting admissions beyond Deschutes residents. Nevertheless, what we do see is some level of correlation, of course, not perfect, but some level of correlation in terms of case numbers going up, and within two to four weeks, we see hospital admissions going up, and then following that, we see deaths in, of course, some of the cases.
It'll be interesting to see a few more data points on that also, just, you know, the correlation, how it goes over time.
Indeed, indeed. Now that we know this is of interest, certainly, we're going to pay more attention to it, and as we collect data, we'll have better understanding of the patterns. Thank you. And my last slide before I give the floor to Dr. Conway. This is a bit updated. So perhaps the slide deck that you do have is not necessarily exactly as this. I saw that the graph was slightly updated, so I put that in this presentation before, and I did that after I sent out the slide deck to you. There is still, I think, OHA, Governor's Office are still synergizing the risk-based framework with the information that came out yesterday. Nevertheless, the take-home message here is that our county still sits, it's among the 25 counties that sits at the extreme risk, risk level category, which reflects two major or two main indicators. One is the case rate, which, so it's above 200 that we know, and that puts us in the extreme risk. And the other is positivity rate, which we are in perhaps the mid-range, yellow range. Nevertheless, because of the case rate, it puts us in the extreme risk category. Now, also to mention that these are now, the risk-based framework and the two indicators are advisory for the school districts in terms of making decisions, informed decisions for their reopening plans. So with that, I'll give the floor to Dr. Conway, and I'll move the slides. You are on mute, Dr. Conway.
Okay. I think I'm unmuted now. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We have been very busy vaccinating. The total number of people vaccinated has been 12,000, almost 700 as of two days ago. We had, this is the total that we aggregated yesterday. There'll be a new total today. Over 2,000 persons have been fully vaccinated, and our vaccination rate per the OHA calculations is 766 or 767, and that puts us in the highest category. But we have other company, a number of the smaller eastern counties have actually higher vaccination rates than that, but with very small denominators. Wheeler County is the most outstanding as far as rate, but they have a very small population. I do, let's see.
Oh, Dr. Conway, I have a question. Administrator Anderson and I were on a call yesterday for the Visitors Bureau, and someone on that call said that they had met four people that had driven over, I think, the mountain to Deschutes County so they could get their vaccination. Are we checking ID at all when people check in to get their shots? Don't we give priority to Crook Jefferson in Deschutes County?
We do give priority to it, and our messaging is to them. However, OHA has a policy of self-attestation, so if someone wants to prevaricate about where they live, or there may also be ambiguities, so some people may attest that they live here, if they have a second home here or whatnot. We're not detectives. This is a very high throughput operation. We certainly discourage that. We've heard, we heard that in Marion County, many people came from other counties as well. I heard a news story the other day about someone that drove almost 2,000 miles from somewhere in the Midwest, a coastal state, it wasn't Oregon, to get vaccinated. So this is, in a scarcity economy, I think that it's not unusual that we'd have people that are indifferent or even intentional roadbreakers. But the idea of investigating attestations would be extremely cumbersome and place a considerable burden on some people who may just have trouble having the right documents.
Well, I just, I've talked to a lot of people that haven't gotten their vaccination yet, and they are really wanting to be on that list. And if people from outside our community are coming, I just feel like they're taking a vaccination that someone that does live here in Deschutes County. I don't know. The person telling us the story really was rather, I think, surprised that he had met so many people that had driven over here. So it does seem like, okay, if word's out, then we can only expect more people to come.
So Commissioner Dare, we do gather demography on the registration form. So once again, if people prevaricate on... So once again, if people pre-vericate on that, we really, we really don't have any, any prerogative unless we were to equally and thoroughly investigate all. And we really don't have the personnel to do that. And that's, and once again, OHA has a very firm policy on self-attestation and vaccination. And I don't, I don't, and we also don't have any way of enumerating because of that, we don't have any way of enumerating the percentage of violators. The other thing is that we, we are ahead of a number of other counties, partially because we have organized some ongoing successful mass vaccination events. And some people are really, really desperate for this. So certainly the, the long-term solution is having more vaccine. And it's very important that it be distributed equitably. If you look at this, this graphic, you can see that not all, not all the counties are able to do that yet. So I think there's going to be quite a bit of effort in the next two or three allocations to even out the vaccination rates in counties, which may actually mean that we would get less vaccine and therefore maybe be drawing less of what you may be describing as unwanted attention. There is, while we're on the vaccine data, I do want to update the board on something. I don't know if any of you saw emails, but the state and federal government have contracts that were publicly announced and generous allocations of vaccines to national pharmacy chains to vaccinate long-term care facilities. Public health departments were allocated doses to vaccinate the remaining Phase 1A groups, but not those, not those that were enumerated in the long-term care facilities as resident, as, as staff, along with residents. During our, the attestation process last week and then further checking over the weekend and into the beginning of this week, we became aware of seven. We did reach out to all the long-term care facilities and became of seven, aware of seven that had not been scheduled as expected under a state's process. We notified the state. We pushed, we reached out to each of them. As of yesterday, five of the seven facilities have been scheduled by their assigned pharmacy train. And we will fill the gap to vaccinate residents and staff in the remaining two facilities today. Long-term care facility residents and staff that don't fall within the moderately narrow criteria are also welcome to schedule an appointment online. Next slide. So these, this is the vaccine interest form. We encourage residents, speaking back to the prior discussion, to register. We have 28,000 so registered. Next slide, please.
Well, let's take a step back there. So the community goal, the headline on that, CDC guidelines and, you know, just epidemiology of a pandemic. The community goal, getting to 70, 75 or 80% community goal of vaccinations, that's the big picture. And, you know, that's when, when people think of, you know, what's the goal? What's the vision? Where are we going? That's the statement right there. You know, greater than 70 is a good starting point. This will be a national and international, you know, goal for the vaccine implementation around the world. So as I say, once, once we start getting, getting rolling here, that'll be the next number we're all looking at.
As more information comes in, I think it'd be prudent for this to be set more at 75 or 80%. However, setting this as a goal during our mass vaccination effort and going back and being diligent with those who were either missed, didn't register or vaccine hesitant should help us to get there. Certainly, this is a, this is not our aspirational goal. This is our concrete, concrete intention. Our aspirational goal would be probably more in the direction of 80%.
Dr. Conway, can you remind us again, or remind me again? So we are, we, when we are setting goals for how many people are going to be vaccinated, we are not including children, right? So what is, what is 70% of?
Yes. What we did was we looked at the percentage of the population that's 16 or older because the, the current emergency use authorizations for the vaccines have a lower limit of age 16. So that ends up being around 70% of the population. And then we just, for the planning figure for the mass, mass outreach vaccination, we multiplied that, I think it was 108. Well, we ended up, I think, with 108,000 by taking 140 or so and multiplying that by 7.7.
Thank you.
And it's important to realize that this is, this is stratified by age, that we're working our way down. The other thing is that this is, this community goal may shift if there's, there's multiple vaccines. One of the ones that's in the use in the United States that are undergoing trials for effectiveness and safety in ages 12 to 16. And there are international vaccines that are being designed to be used down to elementary school children. So there will be other vaccines that will come down the pipeline that will permit us to vaccinate children as well. The other thing is that the vaccine production lines are undergoing tweaking. The Moderna announced in the last two days that they would be adding a tweak to provide coverage to the South Africa fast-spreading strain. It also is causing some detectable antigen shift so that the outside of the virus has some slightly changed spike protein. So I think there'll be continuous modification during the rollout. And there is this specter of even people that are fully vaccinated with the two doses of these requiring either a modification dose, a second booster dose, a third dose sometime in the next year or so, as well as, as changing vaccines as, as we go along. But we're really, I think that despite all this and despite, despite the enormous human tragedy of the deaths and people that are left disabled by this disease, the vaccine is, and the rapidity of the vaccine, the effectiveness of it is, is, I'm very hesitant to use the term miraculous, but it's, it's remarkable. And we all feel privileged to have the opportunity to help with what we're hoping will be a definitive intervention. Shall I go on?
Yes.
So we do require appointments. We, the, the state's guideline for the age tranches is down to 80. However, we found that many of the octogenarians that we were conversing with had difficulty navigating the online registration. So we've, we, St. Charles kindly stood up and staffed a call-in line, which has been very heavily utilized, actually became overwhelmed at one point, to be able to allow telephone registration. And because we were aware of that as a substantial barrier and that it might take some time with the current tranche of vaccines and the mass events that we're running the next, continuing for the next few days, we wanted to be sure that we made full utilization. So we did open down to 75 or older. And we've had a very, very robust response. They're given by appointment. There's no end-of-day list, per se. And then we draw up the amount of doses needed throughout the day to ensure that no doses are wasted. And at, at the fairgrounds, we had, we were fortunate to have a pharmacy team that's been extracting on average 5.9 doses from each five-dose vial so that we're, we're stretching things substantially.
So Dr. Conway, the fact that if you had COVID and recovered, you are still being vaccinated, we're not considering those, those people, those parties as having any immunity?
In the screening interview, individuals that had COVID within the last 90 days are deferred. Individuals that have had it more than that are not deferred. There's unknown residual resistance to infection post-COVID infection. We do know that there's a known substantial resistance to infection post-vaccination. This is just a footnote, access to appointments, Central Oregonians may be accompanied to their vaccine appointment. Only a person with the appointment will get the vaccine. Wheelchairs, golf courts and staff are available for mobility support and access. Sergeant Garibay was telling me that after the snow, there's been a armada of at least 10 golf carts that have been deployed at the fairgrounds to help people that are having trouble navigating the snow. And there's also been meticulous attention to snow and ice control on the grounds. Next slide, please. So this is the, this is the vaccine allocation scheme, if you will, and the subdivision of the Phase 1, which we have attested to having completed. We are having some people that initially refused or were hesitant coming back. So we are continuing to fill that in. And there are also some families that missed the first or second outrage about their, their ADD household member, that their disabled household, household member they're providing services to, which would also make them eligible. So we still have a trickle of healthcare folks coming in. But we've been very fortunate to be able to move on to the educator band and actually provide vaccinations to a very large number of educators in the last few days as well.
But you did, you did say that the residential care facilities are scheduled. The ones that had been missed are now scheduled to be given their vaccination, their first.
Yes, the, the five, if you will, errant or tardy pharmacies, the, the five unserved of the seven, we have been assured that they are being vaccinated now by the, those pharmacies. And I guess, I don't know if they weren't keeping up or if they had some bookkeeping problems. The other two that were still, if you will, orphaned, we are, we are vaccinating today. Our highest priority is to vaccinate as many residents as possible based on whatever supply chain is available and working their way down through the allocation list. Last week, we had 4,600 persons from Central Oregon vaccinated at the Fair and Expo Center. And as I mentioned, we have opened the eligibility down to just above age 75. And it's dependent upon, I have to really remind people, it's dependent upon vaccine quantities. And given the, the vaccination rate map that I showed, I think that we reasonably do have to expect that there's going to be some evening out. And we may have some, some very lean vaccine resupply. There's a commitment to provide second doses routinely. But dependent upon the federal supply chain and this, what the state gets coming in, I think that we'll probably have, we may have a few lean weeks after this going forward while, while some of that is made more even across the state. We've been very fortunate because to be approved, not only to hold mass, mass events, but also to be provided the substantial deployment of National Guard soldiers and very grateful for that, soldiers and officers. Next slide, please. Thanks very much. There's our vaccine URL.
Dr. Conway, if you allow me, can I put in a plug for the coalition that's dealing with the demand side? Just for the committee members and the commissioners, for you to be aware, I think Central Oregon is leading this effort. There is a Central Oregon Vaccine Confidence Coalition that's been in existence since December. And the role of this coalition, which comprises tri-county governments as well as key community leaders and figures, trusted figures and trusted people in our communities, the role of this coalition is really to address the demand side of the, of the vaccination rollout. And, and ensuring that our community members, especially when we move into the next phases towards general pub, towards vaccinating the general public, ensuring that the general public has trust and confidence in the safety of this vaccine, ensuring that we're addressing any issues around risk perception or compliance. And importantly, ensuring that we're addressing convenience factors such as cost or location or where the vaccines are available in our communities. So this coalition has been working hard collectively to address some of these issues in advance. And I just wanted the commissioners to be aware of this effort as well.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One, one question?
Please do.
Dr. Conway Nahad, I have heard that the Biden administration is interested in using the Defense Production Act, essentially to enlist more of the, you know, the private manufacturing base within the pharmaceutical industry to, to increase the, the scale of vaccine production. And yeah, I'm very interested in that. I mean, we hear repeatedly that supply is the big constraint for us. And, you know, just now hearing that because we've been so fortunate to get, you know, robust supplies of vaccine, the last few weeks, we might be facing lean weeks in the, in the, you know, in the next few weeks. I would, I would hope that our county could pile on to efforts to advocate for, you know, for the federal government to do more to produce, you know, to, to, to get our, our country to produce more vaccine. So I'm, I'm curious whether you know of coalitions that are getting behind that idea of, you know, pushing for use of the Defense Production Act or other, other kind of federal policy actions that might, you know, increase our supply of vaccines?
There, there are a number of such coalitions. And then there's a number of very prominent individuals, such as the FDA former director, Dr. Gottlieb, that have been pressing for this, actually was pressing for this during the prior administration as well. The number of public health advocates, such as Dr. Mike Ostraholm or Dr. Ashish Shah, have been pressing for it. There's a number of, there's a number of such coalitions. We can, we can dig up the names of those and forward them to you. However, given that this is a something proposed by the executive branch and that will almost undoubtedly require an appropriation, I think the most appropriate way for elected officials to try to influence this would be through the elected officials and that, that process.
So, so talk.
I did my best, I did my best to avoid the, using the phrase pile on that I think I might have heard.
Well, I, I, I won't shy away from the phrase pile on. I, I'd be excited to help pile on on this. Hearing you, hearing you mention, you know, talking to our members of Congress, that's a, that's a great, that's a great pointer. Thank you.
Well, and we, we certainly would appreciate any help possible. But I do have to temper that, that it is important. And of course, the Vaccine Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow to deliberate on the actual guidance to the, to the governor. But it is important that we not try to leap over everyone else in, in doing this and that we try to ensure that it's, that it's fair and equitable. So I think there will be some evening across the state based on those, those, if you will, demographic and population-based ones. And I think there will also be, there is a planned allocation in particular to help with equity problems. And for all of those reasons, the faster that we can build supply chain for good quality vaccines, the much better that would be.
Understood. Yeah, I, I definitely don't want to fight with people over the slices of the pie. I want the pie to be bigger.
Yes, we all want more pie.
Dr. Conway, I noticed that we didn't have your favorite slide in here around preventive measures. So maybe you could say a few words about that as the conclusion.
So when we do want, we, I apologize for repetition and even harping. But we do want to remind people that until the, the incidence of the COVID infections pandemic goes down very sharply and/or until we have a substantial portion of the population vaccinated, everyone really does need to maintain those things that we've been hearing about for the last year, social distance, masking, good hygiene, and still forming social pods with, with the people that we associate with outside our, our family or household so that we reduce the exposure to others. And I, I think that we're going to be suffering under those constraints for time.
Well, let's touch base a little quick about protocol. So putting on a mask, as I say, and I mentioned this earlier, and then fiddling around with it, taking it off, putting it on, you know, are you in a, a valuable separation environment? Because it's not a sterile environment, so I'm looking on the terminology here. But putting a mask on, hand sanitizer, and you're in a point where the mask is on and your hands have been disconnected from your breath. And then fiddling around with it will reconnect it too. So, and, you know, we're all just driving around, grab, I'm grabbing a mask from the, the passenger. the passenger seat as I'm stepping into the office. But there's other times, after you have to go to the bathroom, washing hands, putting a mask on, hand sanitizer, and you're separating that, that breath from, from your, your, your physical environment. So, you know, my point is, everybody could take a few moments and just think about that protocol of wearing a mask too. Because the value is going to go way down if it's just, you know, not, not pay attention to it, so.
So Commissioner, just, I, I agree, that's a very important point, and thank you for making it. I do want to point out that the early attribution and this almost obsessive attention to phomites, infected surfaces, cloth, et cetera, has been very much eclipsed in the last probably at least six months with the understanding that this, the transmission of this is almost entirely aerosol. So it is good to keep your hands clean, a little bit of alcohol would be, would be good before you start fiddling with your mask. It's not good to touch your face. But the reason we're wearing masks, the types of masks we're wearing, is to protect others. So the cloth mask, the procedure mask, medical type mask, that's not an N95, is to protect others. And there is a chance that you could introduce virus by touching your face and whatnot. But the thought that that's a major source of transmission is, is quite diminished unless, of course, somebody, you know, doesn't have a mask and coughs or sneezes directly in your face, that, that's very bad. And that's one of the reasons why we want everyone to wear masks at all times around other people.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
One more question.
Kind of following that idea of use, of, of kind of encouraging use of the Defense Production Act, I'm, I'm curious whether my colleagues would be interested in sending a letter to our members of Congress? We could ask staff to draft something up and...
Well, so, yeah, just maturing that idea, you know, in, in the terminology you use piling on, I, my first thought is, I have a hunch that anybody at any level of government and healthcare around the world knows that this is a high priority. So, yeah, if it's a specific ask about switching gears at the, you know, federal levels from not using the Defense Production Act to using it, maybe, I, I need to learn more about what that, what that ask really is. You know, because I'm thinking if there's corporate pharmaceutical companies out there and, you know, there's federal dollars committed to paying for their research and prepaying for their delivery, you know, really, is there a big step there or not? I mean, what, what are we asking? So.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, it definitely would be important to understand the implications for private industry and, you know, development of, and incentives for development of intellectual property and things like that.
Yeah, and, I mean, I worked for a pharmaceutical company for years. And, I mean, I know, this is probably job number one around the whole world for anybody that's associated with anything around this. So, yeah, what, what are we asking? I, you know, what, what's the tangible thing, you know?
I, I mean, so is it all right to ask the staff to do some, some homework?
Absolutely, yeah. That's, I'm just letting you know, that'd be my thought.
And would, would, who would be the appropriate people to ask? Would it be appropriate to ask Dr. Conway and Nahad to look into that? Or, or, or admin staff or?
We're happy to coordinate that in admin, Commissioner. We've, we've done a number of letters like that. So Whitney and I will work with the appropriate health staff to draft up as much as we can capture, sort of your comments from today's discussion. We may do a follow-up and then we'll circulate it with all three commissioners to, and bring it back at presumably the next meeting on Monday.
And to understand some of Commissioner DeBonne's concerns about, you know, what does this mean for, for private industry and, you know, balancing, you know, kind of their, their profitability and, and private sector incentives against the, the need for accelerated vaccine production.
Haven't they, though, moved the million vaccinations up a day, I think up to 1.5? Isn't that something that they are working on? I mean, it's already out there. So I'm, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask, but I thought that they really have been ramping up.
I know that that's been said as an aspirational goal, but if you don't have the doses, then you can't do it.
Well, the interesting thing, if you read the daily report, Oregon itself has received 589,200 doses as of yesterday's OHA report. They, per their documents, they are saying that they've given 325,473. So they're still, like, on the, they haven't prescribed the other 263,727. So there's, you know, okay, we have what, 4.2 million? We've received almost 600,000 doses? That's, that's fairly significant when you look at the whole numbers. Hopefully, those 263,727 doses that have not been allocated yet have, are actually, you know, have been given to somebody, they haven't been destroyed, they haven't been lost. So I know that our team is really careful at the fairgrounds on, you know, when they have, they, you know, six doses at the end of the day, that's all they do. They don't waste any doses. So they really, the pharmacy protocol was excellent there. But this is still a really big number. And a week ago, that number was like 197,000. So that number is actually getting bigger. I mean, maybe that means that, you know, our numbers aren't getting into their system fast enough, I don't know. But that's, you know, that's, that's pretty huge. We've gotten almost 600,000 doses for the state and we have that population.
Something I think that's really important to understand about those, those numbers, and if George and Nahad are still with us, they might be able to answer this. But these, these shipments, they don't go to a central state storage site. They are coming to the local level. And so if there are hundreds of thousands of doses around the state that have not been administered yet, it's because our peers, hospitals, county health departments, clinics, pharmacies, haven't built the apparatus yet to get them into people's arms. So what I just heard from, from Dr. Conway was, we are, you know, we are potentially facing getting less, less doses in the next few weeks because of overall supply constraints. And in, if it's true that those, those doses are in freezers around the state at health departments or hospitals, if we want to go, you know, like, if we're, if we're focusing on that as a problem, then basically, we're pointing the finger at our, at our peers. And like, I don't want to point the finger at our peers. I want to get more supply coming to our county.
Dr. Conway or Nahad, can you, can you kind of clarify that a little bit? Like, the, the, the doses that are, have not been administered yet in the state of Oregon, where are they?
There's, there's a, that's, there's a sort of a mixed answer to that. First of all, you, you did mention, I think, that the supply chain doesn't all go to a central depot in Oregon. Most of it is transshipped by an intermediary. So for example, McKesson Corporation is who's delivering the Moderna, Moderna doses to us. There is constraint on some of the, some of the doses that are in local health departments because they have not been able to attest to go on beyond the, you know, you remember the drill last week, the Nata Station letter that we were beyond 1A and had done our best to fulfill and then are doing our best to help the remainders, stragglers trickle in. Counties that haven't been able to do that are under some pressure to, to withhold those doses and keep them in abeyance until those people present themselves. So that's, that's, if you will, intentional, albeit awkward, constraint. And I don't think we want to be putting pressure on people to release those since it is, it is, they're trying to be compliant. And I think most, most counties other than that are really pressing, as we are, to inject very much. I think, I, I think that the focus on the supply and manufacturing at a national level would be very, very helpful.
Great, well, let's move on here. Next item is going to be CARES Act funding update. And these have been pretty light recently, but there'll be a point in time, I got to imagine. Greg Munn, possibly?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
All right, there we go. Greg Munn from County Finance, I just want to give you a brief update on the fiscal side of our response to COVID-19. And Commissioner DeBonne, as you mentioned, these have been fairly light and I, as of the last several weeks, I expect them, this one will be light as well, I should say. So I want to let you know that there's been no change in the allocation worksheet that we've been, that I've been sharing with you weekly. Except that I had hoped that we would have a, an update today to give you an, give you some information on actual expenditures through the end of December. But we ran into a little bit of a staffing, short-staffed a little bit, and we haven't been able to put that together. So hoping again to share that with you next week. Again, at this point, in the allocation of those revenue to the expenses, at least for the CARES Act, is relatively small compared to what it had been. We were seeing a lot of dollars going out, a lot of dollars being expended early on. So we're kind of at the tail end of that. But look for that next week. The other, one of the other pieces I wanted to let you know is that we're continuing to seek information on other funding sources other than just CARES Act funding sources. We have been in communication with our lobbyist and waiting continuously to hear from him on what's going on at the state level. I do know that the state of Washington, our neighbors to the north, have announced plans for their allocation of their share of the $900 billion stimulus package that was approved in December. So hoping to know soon about the state of Oregon's plans to do the same.
A question for you, or something to research. So Monday, we sent a letter of support for the Pine Community Clinic to Oregon Community Foundation for a project. They named the project Overtime for Vaccine Support. So, you know, they just don't have a fund for, for that. And my point is that there's probably a few of those opportunities where, you know, $10,000 at a time, if we could come up with that for very much the same reason, overtime for people providing vaccines in a vaccine clinic, extended hours or whatever, that may be an opportunity in the very near future. And if I was just exactly where Commissioner Chang was going, you know, if there's doses out there and somebody wants to go home at 5:00 and we can pay them for a few more hours, very much get, that may be valuable investment. So, yeah, just keep that in mind and maybe follow that up through the paths too.
Yep, yeah, will do, definitely. So the third update I want to give you is, if you remember back to probably the May timeframe, we issued, set, we, we sent $73,000 to COIC for the purpose of establishing a small business loan program. And those funds had all been dispersed. And we received notification last week that one of those loans, $10,000 worth, had been repaid. So we were a little surprised that this came back. We thought they would probably take longer to actually receive any repayment or have that even become an issue. But it has, has, $10,000 has been repaid. COIC is holding those funds. And I want to have that conversation with the board on how we should proceed. And just a couple of options to consider. One is that we can leave the funds with COIC for future disbursement, for future loans. As they're written underneath the agreements, they could, we could ask for COIC to pay that, those funds back to us. We could put it back in the pool and then reallocate according to the allocation process that we've been doing on the spreadsheet since then. Or the loans could simply be converted into a grant and forgiven.
So you're saying that's for next week or are there decisions for today on that?
It could be for today or, or next week. There's not necessarily a sense of urgency from my seat, but I did want to bring that up for the board conversation.
Well, it's new information right now, you know, understanding that where those, where the dollars come from originally, $73,000? Was that CARES Act or general fund?
It was CARES funds, yeah.
So it is that flexible at this point too?
I guess part of it depends on, on the, the federal relief bill that was passed in December and whether we expect that there might be more, more similar color money coming to our, coming to our level, which would create the opportunity to do another, like a whole nother round of granting or, or loaning in, in, in my perspective. And certainly, businesses struggling with COVID is, is going to be with us for the foreseeable future. So, you know, if, if we had the opportunity to do another round of, of loans like that, I, I would be very interested in, in seeing that happen. And, and so how that ties to the, to the repayment is, you know, if we could add that $10,000 to the pot of, to the pot of funds that, that we're interested in, in contributing to a future cycle of, of loaning. So that, that, that's my initial thoughts on those.
Well, and for the restaurants that are affected, and I've heard, you know, kind of leadership at the national level and like our health department comments sometimes is, a, people have advocated for government is slowing down business and specifically in the state of Oregon, stopping, you know, closing sectors. So loans aren't going to help in some of those scenarios. So I'm just thinking, you know, if these are federal dollars for CARES Act relief of COVID, you know, I'd lean towards grants at this time.
You heard that the unemployment for Deschutes County went up to 7.6. It really jumped up again. So because of our hospitality industry and the fact that the restaurants, the breweries, the bars are all struggling. So that was really unfortunate. I think it was in effect from what happened in November and now that's the number we're looking at. I think $10,000 is a drop. Hopefully, we may have some more money. But, you know, honestly, people really just want to get back to work. The grants that we did, the 2.4 million grants, thank goodness we got to do them. Thank goodness it was a check, but really, it was a drop for those people. You know, maybe they could pay their utility bills. I mean, I know it made a difference for a few of those people, but for most people, it was a drop and we really need them to get back to work. I would say bring it back here and wait till we can add to it and then send it back.
Yeah, so my thought is, let's have a discussion today, maybe bring it back Monday if there's, you know, an action item type thing or next Wednesday. So if we can get mature on that.
Is, so the, the forgivable loan program that we do with EDCO is, it is a forgivable loan opportunity. So you can convert the loan to a grant and the, the dollars loaned is, is pegged to, you know, jobs created. Or, you know, I mean, we could, I, I wonder if we could use some kind of similar structure here. So just put it out as a, as a, you know, potential loan. And if you meet the job retention kind of objective, then, then it becomes a grant.
Yeah, let's, let's have that discussion, absolutely. And so you mentioned it was a $73,000 loan fund?
That was the orig, yes, that was the original loan amount, or the original loan pool. And of that, $10,000 was repaid about a week or so ago.
Yeah, so let's lay that out.
That original loan.
Lay it out on a spreadsheet with a little bit of history and the choices, how we got there and then what the options would be going forwards.
Okay, sounds good.
And Greg, what is the balance right now of the EDCO funding we do for businesses that, you know, want to add more employees? I mean, they're willing to commit to that for a year, two years, to add more employees. What is the balance of that fund?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I can certainly get it unless Tom might know.
Part of our discussion.
I think it's about $150,000.
I think that's what you, I couldn't remember it exactly either, but...
That's an, that's sort of a rolling fund.
Right.
Has acted to replenish it once the funds got low. But we do know that there's a couple new ones that are coming to you in the next few weeks, as Don Mill may have mentioned from EDCO when he was here a week or two ago.
Great.
Do we know the dollar amount on those asked? We don't yet.
Not yet.
Can I ask, how we, where do we capitalize that, that loan program, forgivable loan program from?
Well, it's in a discrete fund. So we have a economic loan fund where the money is kept. The funds that have come into that fund have varied over the years. We've used lottery funds, we've used general... We've used lottery funds, we've used general funds, we may have used unallocated TRT in the past.
Okay, well, yeah, let's prep maybe for Monday, possibly Wednesday next week.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Item number four, consideration aboard signature of order establishing franchised solid waste collection rates. Tim Shimki, there you go.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yes.
All right. Tim Shimki, I'm directly department for solid waste. We're here today to consider granting a collection rate increase to two franchise collection companies in the county. I'd like to start by giving you guys a brief overview of the franchise system, depending for Commissioner Chang's benefit being the commissioner. Local governments, Deshutes County regulate the collection and transfer of solid waste recyclables in the county. They do that through county law, for us, county codes, cities have their code. The code basically says you cannot collect, transport solid waste recyclables to a disposal site for a fee unless you have a collection franchise granted by the local government. There's four franchises in the county. High Country Disposal is the north county from Deshutes Junction North, includes the city of Remnant Sisters, and out including Blackberry Ranch, Ben Garbage, and Recycling. They collect from the north half of the city of Bend, Highway 20, Greenwood North to Deshutes Junction. High State Disposal collects the southern half of Bend and the unincorporated areas down to and including Sun River. And Le Pine Disposal collects from Sun River south to the county line. It's important to note that each of the cities have their own code. All the codes are very, very similar, but they're not identical. And so the city is responsible for managing that inside the city limits. The county's jurisdiction is only in the unincorporated areas. So the rates that you're going to consider today do not impact city residences. The county basically says, or basically establishes a minimum level of service that the franchise has to provide and a maximum rate that they can charge for that service. They operate within a 9% to 12% proper range, that's the target. They give us a financial report every year, you see what their profitability is. If their profitability drops below 9%, they're allowed to request an adjustment to their rates. We have two franchises that made that request, Ben Garbage and High Country Disposal that requested a 4% rate increase. Franchise is also paying for the Deshutes County, they pay a 3% franchise fee on their gross receipts to help offset the cost of administering the franchise system.
Tim, for clarity, so yeah, I noticed that in the memo, 3% of gross receipts and franchise fees to county. So we can truly think of that as to the county's solid waste enterprise operations. It's not to the general fund of Deshutes County. So it's truly to support waste streams?
Yes.
Yep, confirming. Thank you.
Solid waste department, yes. You see my staff report there, in 2019, High Country Disposal profitability was 6.3%. Ben Garbage and Recycling's profitability was 6.6%. We are both eligible for that rate adjustment, they made that request. Our approach is to retain a certified public accountant firm to review that request. It's not a full-blown audit, but the accountant will determine whether the request is reasonable and justified. That's the term that we use. And that was done. Couple of highlights from that report. Both of those franchises, in fact, three of the four franchises have been acquired by a national company, Republic Services. And so one of the questions we had was, did the purchase of the franchise drive this rate adjustment? That is not supposed to happen, and the accountant confirmed that it did not. So the rate adjustment is based on, you know, the ever increasing cost of doing business, it was just time for a rate adjustment.
Tim?
Yes?
I noticed it's only four three-quarters of a year. They didn't buy it until April, and we can look at these numbers, they're only for part of a year, and yet we can say, okay, they're not, you know, they're not making their proper percentage of profit, and therefore we have to raise the rates for all those people in the community. I just, I really kind of thought it was fascinating that it wasn't a whole year, and now we are raising the rates 4%. I would have been happier if they would have done like a fiscal year, you know, through like April, you know, March 30th. So we would have really seen a whole year. I'm just kind of aware of that.
Basically, the calendar year. So they give us our financial reports on May 15th. So the idea is they wrap up, in this case, 2019, their business is done, they go through the process of paying their taxes and, you know, getting year-end finalized, and then, you know, 15th day or 15th or the following month, April 15th, free tax day is when they give us their reports. So this is all based on actual data, but from the calendar year 2019. Does that help?
No, no. What I'm saying is, they hadn't been in an operation for a whole year. They were only in operation from April 1st to 12/31, gave us their numbers, said they aren't making it, and that they need this 4%. We're recognizing that they need this 4%. So I just, you know, I would feel better about it if it was 12 months of operation. Of course, probably, you know, January, February, March aren't the easiest months to operate what they do with our roads.
Those operating costs and revenues from January, February, March are included in the financial report. So yes, Republic has only operated for a portion of the year, but we're seeing the entire year of High Country Disposal and Ben Garbage and Recycling in that annual report.
Okay, so their numbers, when they bought it, they continued on with those same numbers? Or, you know, they accumulated them forward, then?
Yes. We get a report from the calendar year 2019, it crosses both owners of those companies, you know, the prior owner, the first three months, and then the new owner in the last nine months. We're getting a full year of data, it's just two different operators, I guess, in that year.
Okay, when did they have the last rate increase? Do you know, for High Country?
2017, we raised our disposal fee here at the landfill that got passed through to the collection franchises at that time. But that was to offset our increased fees to them, as opposed to them falling short because of the price of fuel or the cost of trucks or anything like that. So I can't remember the last time High Country Disposal actually asked for a rate adjustment based on their, you know, just their business and how it's evolving with, you know, higher costs, et cetera. So a cost of living adjustment, I can't remember the last time High Country requested that.
And as I say, I don't either, and I know that, you know, they work in that band, so it's probably gone up and down in the last 10 years, but I don't know that we've changed this fee.
Tim, can I ask?
We set a maximum rate that they could charge, and some franchises will choose not to implement that maximum rate if they feel that they don't need all that, or if they're worried that if we implement the maximum rate, we may be over the 12% line. So they moderate what they actually charge, we set a ceiling.
Tim, can I ask, besides that 2017 rate increase, like, if you look back kind of longer-term historical, and maybe this is what you're asking Commissioner DeBonne, if you look back longer-term historical, like, how frequently do rate increases come along? I mean, how frequently does this, is there like an average, you know, this happens every couple, you know, three years, five years, 10 years, or is it?
I would say four or five years. Just looking at our tip fee, which impacts them, obviously, but, I mean, we did it in 2010 and we did it in 2017, so there were seven years between rate adjustments from our operation, which, you know, got passed on to the franchise collection companies as well. So, you know, we're on that anywhere from, you know, four to seven-year rotation for our fee increases, and typically, you know, when we make that adjustment and we compensate them for, allow them to raise their rates to offset our increased fees, that meets their needs, and again, I can't remember the last time they came in and said, you don't have an increase going, but we're vulnerable over the lower limit of the profitability because of fuel prices or labor costs or whatever it is. So that's a little confusing, I guess, but that's the histories. Not very often do they request rate adjustments. Usually, we're adjusting our rates, which then resulted in adjustment to them, and that's the way it's been working, I guess.
Do we anticipate, so if our rates that we charge them can drive their rate changes, are we, do we have a, do we have a rate increase kind of on the horizon? I mean, that, you know, I'd just hate to bless, you know, this higher rate to the, you know, to the consumers, and then a year later, you know, hit them with another one.
We do not anticipate a rate adjustment on our fees in the coming budget cycle. It could happen beyond that. We have identified a number of capital needs in a solid waste management plan for the county and, you know, a new landfill, just one is building up, rebuilding transportation. So our fees are going to go up, but I don't have one schedule for the coming budget cycle.
Thank you. Well, remember, we had a policy request about large disposal for new development in Bend, which could have triggered something like that earlier than our operation. So that's a policy choice that we basically had a request to us. So we could have affected that.
Right.
So a couple of questions real quick. So there's slightly different numbers on these service areas, you know, just, I'm just looking at the first number, 1545, 1485, 1595, so just slightly, the 1544. So each one of those are calculated down to that accuracy, that profit margin? You know, so I mean, they're within sense of each other?
Yes. Oh, I just got a note because these franchises are listening to this meeting, that Ben Garbage, their last request for a rate based on a cost of living was in 2008.
Okay, that kind of tells you, because as I say, I don't remember doing.
Is Susan on? Can she tell us when High Country was? And they are my service, and they do do an excellent job. I do wish that they picked up recycling, but since I drive by for a year and the transfer station there, it's not a problem. But Susan, if you're listening, it really would be lovely if you could add recycling. I mean, I really, usually, you see these people in the community, Susan, Kristen, I know had a baby this last year. They're definitely part of our community as, you know, when Republic bought it, we didn't want to lose that relationship, and hopefully, we'll get to see them again soon.
So, yeah, the franchise partners are watching, but they're not part of this discussion at this point in time, is that correct?
Yes. So they called and sent me a note.
Yep, yep.
I'm not sure I understood your question, Commissioner DeBonne.
Just confirming, so, you know, we talk about the rural areas and distant rural areas, so I'm looking at exhibits, exhibit A, B, C, D.
Okay.
And each one is just slightly percentage different or two.
Right. So all those exhibits, so what I do, if I'm going to adjust the rates of a franchise company, whether it's one or two or all of them, I restate everybody's rate so that I know the last time we made any kind of adjustment was in 2021, and I can go to that document, see everybody's rates in 2021, even though in this case, two of the four franchises are not being adjusted. So don't be misled, all those rates, only appendix or exhibit D and E reflect a change from what's happened in prior years.
Right. Well, that helps, because, yeah, as I say, I was looking at them all. Wonderful, good information.
Okay. I'd like to point out that they're at 4%. Yeah, both companies, 2008 was the last time they asked for an adjustment based on cost of living needs, as opposed to our pass-throughs. So they requested a 4% rate increase, and when I, the accountant calculated that, said if we allow that, then High Country Disposal will shoot them in at 9.75% profit, and Ben Garbage Recycling is actually still below 9% at 7.75. So sometimes, franchises, they know they can operate within 9% to 12%, they come in looking for an adjustment to get as close to 12% as possible. The rationale is that that much longer than before, we'll get down to 9% and need another rate adjustment. I give kudos to Republic for restraining themselves in this regard and only asking for a very reasonable adjustment here, when they could have asked for more. I just point out here in my staff report, you know, 32-gallon can service is typically the most popular service, and this rate adjustment would result in an additional 71 cents per month for that, that service. That's the impact that county residents will see here. Patty, I'd like to point out, we are looking at trying to incorporate more curbside collection of recyclables in the unincorporated areas of the county. I hope to have something here, well, I probably won't get it done since I'm looking at retirement, but we definitely want to offer a recycling option to people who are out there in rural areas that don't have that now. So we're working on that.
Thank you, Tim. And I thought maybe you changed your mind and you decided not to retire. I know you've been having so much fun.
Who knows what could happen before that magic date arrives?
There you go.
You could always change your mind.
I could be here forever.
Definitely.
Well, I just want to put out a real positive word. We have a very cost-effective system. It's been cost-effective for many, many years, and the future looks really, you know, kind of stable. I mean, and that's the most value in this system, is a stable, long-term solid waste system. We've really got the value out of our current landfill, great partnerships with the franchise operators. Yeah, there is no complaints that I've heard over the years about solid waste, other than maybe a neighbor's, a crow taking apart the neighbor's garbage, but, I mean, just a little point in time, you know, that kind of thing. So, yeah, I mean, we can really celebrate the fact that we've got a long history, and the future looks pretty stable also.
Well, it's nice to know that the prices haven't been raised since 2008. So that is good. I move board signature of order number 2021-003, establishing franchise solid waste collection rates per indication.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes? Yes, thank you very much. Good discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
So it's 11:30, we've got one more item before lunchtime, so we're doing pretty well here. Item five, Public Safety Campus Master Plan Progress Update.
Lee's going to be in the room, or he might be next door?
Oh, yeah, maybe, there may be somebody here to be in person. Okay. So possible, Lee Randall, Dan Hopper, Ken Hales, Tanner Work, Mike Schultz. Oh, there we go. Oh, there we go. And one person live and in person. Thank you for joining us. So Lee Randall's sitting down right now in the room with us.
Let me just take a second here to get situated. Sure.
And slides are coming up now.
All right, well, thank you very much for having us today. I'm excited to be here. For the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director. And we have several other people, as you noticed, on Zoom with us today. Dan Hopper is the Facilities Project Manager. And Ken Hales, Community Justice Director. Tanner Work, Deputy Director for Community Justice for parole and probation. And then with the Sheriff's Office, we have Captain Michael Schultz and Captain Darren McMaster. So our goal today is to review the master plan, provide some progress and accomplishments thus far, and discuss next steps. And I have about 20 slides that should go fairly quickly that mirror the memo that you received in your packet this morning or earlier, probably last week. And I think those slides, we'll probably go through those in about five to seven minutes or so. And then we'll have time for questions and discussion. My goal is to kind of recap a little bit about what we had covered starting in 2017 and 2018, and then provide some information for further discussion. So in November of 2017, we began work on a master plan for the public safety campus, home to 911 Dispatch, Community Justice, Sheriff's Office, Health Services Department, and Oregon State Police. By that time, many of them had already reached out to us with space concerns that they had had. And then additionally, the Board of Commissioners was supported and directed the siting of the Crisis Stabilization Center on the public safety campus. And so one of our goals was to make sure that we had the highest and best use of the remaining acreage that is there on site.
These slides to be?
Yep, I will.
Oh, you got it. Okay, just making sure if you're.
I'm just prepping.
Okay, good.
I will move us along here in a second. And so that's just to give you some background about where the Public Safety Campus Master Plan began going forward. So they're the items we want to work on today. And then this just gives you a sense of how central to the county, to Deschutes County, the public safety campus is on the north side of Bend. And so it is 28 acres, as I mentioned, to stakeholders, 911, Community Justice, Sheriff's Office, Health Services, and Oregon State Police. So the goal of the master plan, as I mentioned, was the highest and best use of the remaining, of the 28 acre site and the space that we had remaining, and establish the stabilization center in a way that didn't impinge on future growth for the other existing stakeholders. So this kind of launches us into the discussions we had at the time. And I'll move fairly quickly through this, but it gives you a sense of the history of the site. 92 to 94, the site was purchased, the jail was built, Oregon State Police was operating adjacent to the site there. 94 to 2000, adult PNP and juvenile detention were built. We added vehicle maintenance and search and rescue for the Sheriff's Office, as well as maintenance and storage buildings for the jail. In 2000, the southern portion was purchased. And then there was some additional rounding out of some Sheriff's Office facilities there. And you can as well see the growth in the surrounding neighborhood.
Is that a round pen for horse training possibly? Or what was that round spot, you know, in the dirt? Sure, it's real round.
That is a good point. I mean, it had been, that whole area had been.
On the previous slide, it has a round there, too.
At one time.
See?
Yep.
I'm sure it's a round pen.
Alien landing pen.
Oh!
So 2000 to 2012, we also purchased the Programs Building and the former OSP Building. It's after the construction of the 911 OSP Facility Recovery Center, operated through Health Services, was built as well. And then there was additional storage for the Sheriff's Office. And then some additional expansion, the 144-bed housing expansion for the jail, parking lot expansion at the former OSP site, and then some remodels at search and rescue that provided some additional operational command space. So 2014 to current, there are additional changes going on at the site. Additional parking was added adjacent to 911 in the OSP facility. We began work on the master planning effort, which we're discussing today. And then the remodel of the parole and probation Programs Building into the stabilization center, which was an outgrowth of the master planning effort. So this kind of is, again, a quick recap of the process that we went through, and I will summarize quickly. Again, the Sheriff's Office, I'm sorry, the stakeholders and their various operations are summarized there for you. We really organized the needs, we met with each stakeholder over that winter, 2017, 2018, with a series of questions about current needs, expected needs down the road. And we really categorized them in six different buckets, you could say, that were common to each of the programs. So office and program space, there were several stakeholders that identified that as an ongoing need. Parking was identified, training and meeting space. And the training and meeting space discussion is always interesting because each of those stakeholders have their unique operations and needs. And for one group, training space may be a classroom that seats 40 people or 100 people for their staff. For others, it may be room, a large size room where they can work on defensive tactics or something physical. And so that really kind of becomes a blended conversation about the different approaches there. And then security concerns, that's something we wanted to think about as we worked through future plans. And one thing that came through that is the idea of keeping similar uses in similar areas of the campus. So I'll point that out when we get to one of the larger slides. But the idea being that you have jail activities concentrated near the jail, activities for the public coming for services, maybe through a different area, and then services that are being, that are operational to a department, but not direct to the public, those could be isolated in a separate area, for example, search and rescue and the comings and goings off of Brita on the back end of the site. Oops, just to recap quickly, then storage needs and then additional needs. So that's kind of how, as we went through the process, we organized those needs. So public safety options, it kind of brings us to the update portion of the conversation today. And so the stabilization center, that, I think, has been a great addition to the community that all of us that have the opportunity to work on it are very proud of. It was identified in Cascade Business News as a top project of 2020, which is exciting for the county. And that's complete. So that has been.
Lee?
Yes.
But it's really not complete because alcoholism is really a huge, enormous problem. And when we were doing all our investigative work, we were told that actually it needs like a sobering part of it. I mean, I haven't talked to Holly about it recently, but I know that that's another issue in our community. And is it something that could be added on there in that spot? So that's why I, you know, I don't feel like the stabilization is honestly complete. They said alcoholism is like, you know, 80% of a lot of people that end up with major issues.
So we, at the time, had explored a couple of different options, and those are still available. One is for, in addition to the north, to accommodate a sobering center. And that, we kind of laid that out on the site as part of a conceptual plan. So that's one option that the Board could look at pursuing down the road. In our longer term plans, we had, when we get to the campus map, I'll show you that, we had had a concept of moving parking for employees and staff and secure parking to the, to a center part of the campus that could be accessed and secure, and then freeing up some of those outlying parking lots for additional projects. One of those that we identified was a combined stabilization, a multiple, multi-story building that could combine future stabilization needs with a sobering center. And that's something that, yes, I agree, has come up all through the process and has been identified as a need as well.
I know it's.
Lee, that the current construction took into account the expansion for the sobering center in the future as, and the building is capable of that, both electric, HVAC, and plumbing wise.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you, Dan. So October of 2018, we brought several near-term projects to the Board, adult parole and probation, Sheriff's Office Works Center expansion, the community service shop, new shop and associated parking lot, the stabilization center, as I mentioned, and then general parking expansion to accommodate needs for secure parking and then for additional space for the stabilization center. As I mentioned, stabilization center is complete. The community service shop is shovel ready. We are at the point where we're ready to advertise for bids and move forward. The Budget Committee had approved the funding for that project for this year, and it's permitting is basically complete, and that one's ready to move forward. And the community service shop and parking B expansion really go hand in hand. And to accommodate the displacement of the community service shop from the former Programs Building, which was remodeled for stabilization. And then adult parole and probation, and the expansion of the Works Center, as I mentioned. So before I move into midterm components, at that time, at this point, I'd like to just kind of recap some of the other direction and work that's been completed to this point. As I mentioned, for stabilization center, design through completion in March of 2019, and then the grand opening in July of 2020. And then on the PNP expansion side, the progress in June 2019, the Board approved using the construction manager, general contractor model for that project. In June as well, a design contract was approved, and we've moved forward with development of concepts. And then a contract as well for a commercial construction manager, general contractor has been, had been approved by the Board to create that project team of the design team, contractor team, and then the county staff working as well. So those are examples of progress we've made so far at Board Direction, beginning in October of 2018. And I will touch on that as well in a minute as we go forward, when we get to next steps. So moving forward, midterm components for the Sheriff's Office and Community Justice, we have the Sheriff's Office needs identified there that were kind of distilled from that earlier master planning project that can be further developed with input from the Sheriff's Office. Juvenile detention, the opportunity to remodel the former shelter space to have better use for office space for detention, as well as program space for the programs that they have. So I'm happy to go into any level of detail you'd like. This is a concept that was put together for mid and long term. I'll start on the jail side, and I'll just invite Captain Schultz or Captain McMaster to weigh in. But you'll notice, you know, the needs that we had identified were expanded booking, visitation, and then one that isn't represented on here along the side of the existing Sheriff's Office Administration Building would be expanded office space for their operations as the county continues to grow. This does illustrate kind of that core building concept. Really, one of the tenants of the project was to make sure that as we did near-term projects, we weren't building in footprints for expansion needed long term. And that's why we laid out those footprints in the way that they are there. And then, as I mentioned before, future space for stabilization center, office space, combined sobering center there on the east side of the map there. So we're here near the last slide, and we'll be ready for questions and discussion. The near-term projects, in terms of next steps, I've kind of lined out some of the opportunities there with the community service shop being ready to proceed. For adult parole and probation, there are some options that the Board could choose to direct us to do. One would be to provide the concepts that have been developed to the Facility Projects Review Committee, the Community Board that had been created last fall, to help provide a review of those concepts and further information back to the Board if the Board chose to go that route. If a particular option for expansion were selected, we can move forward with that process. We have the CMGC contractor onboard, the design team. And at that point, we can develop plans to the point of construction documents and be able to, then with the final step, come back to the Board with a guaranteed maximum price for an addendum to that CMGC contract for construction to move forward. Related to the master plan and midterm concepts, we're at the point where we can certainly move forward with the Sheriff's Office, obtain their operational data, and fit that into the facilities that are needed to help them long-term with their operations. And then finally, as those processes develop, we'd be able to develop conceptual cost estimates, bring those back to the Board for further direction. So that's the prepared information I have for today. As I mentioned, we've got a great group of experts on the phone with us. If there are any questions or if there's any further discussion you'd like us to weigh in on, but again, thank you very much for your time today.
So the Facilities Projects Review Committee did look at the adult PNP expansion?
No, they have not yet. We were, if the Board wanted us to move in that direction, we'd probably come back to the Board on a separate occasion with a proposed scope of items that the Board would want the committee to review and look at, the kinds of questions that you'd like them to investigate. And then we could have formal Board Direction, or you can weigh in, Tom, to.
Well, yeah, no, it's a great point, Commissioner. I think that it bears mentioning that when the Board gave us the direction to do the remodel of the Programs Building, Lee mentioned that the shop was displaced. And since then, they've been operating in a sort of jury-rigged building here downtown. But perhaps more importantly, the, all the PNP staff that were housed in that building were also displaced. And since then, they've been put in a temporary modular building on that property. So when we came to the Board last year with proposed costs for the expansion of the PNP building, that to consolidate operations, as Lee pointed out in the presentation a couple of times, it's dysfunctional, or at least not optimal to have the PNP staff not together. You know, there's some duplicative aspects to that. And, you know, it's just, it's not optimal in terms of programming. So that was sort of the objective. And so the costs that we presented on the original design for that expansion, you know, seemed high, frankly, at the time, and certainly to the Commissioners. So we were asked to take a step back and look at that design, look at alternatives, a whole series of potential options there. Commissioner Henderson was involved in that process. We had a series of meetings. We involved, in addition to property staff, we had, Project Manager Christie Bolinger was involved. So we did go through a lot of options. And so that one, as Lee said, still is on the table. I think perhaps, you know, a separate presentation to the Board, just on those, that process that we went through and the examination of each of the different options that we considered, are still considering, frankly, in terms of that project, maybe. are still considering frankly in terms of that project maybe warranted. And there's some immediate, there's an immediate ask here today in terms of the shop building, but just circling back to Commissioner Adair's point, that, that was certainly a consideration in terms of that cost and, you know, we're, we're, we're prepared, but perhaps at a separate meeting to go through that history and present some sort of refreshed options on the PMP building expansion.
So, one question I have, parking B expansion. So I'm just looking back at the near-term projects list, stabilization center, community services shop, and parking B. Can you remind me what that is relative to everything? If the slides could be put up again, possibly? Yep, there you go.
Yeah, so you see at the very bottom of the site plan in kind of a darker gray, proposed parking lot there with a small orange building. So, the, the orange building is the shop itself and then to accommodate those operations, parking expansion is needed as well. Currently, kind of with the, the amount of operations that are going out of the juvenile detention facility, those parking lots are pretty well at capacity. And this provides, you know, when you look at the community service program operations with vans and trailers and clients coming and needing parking space, this provides that additional parking for that project.
So parking B would be very much part of the community service shop project?
Correct. They really go hand in hand.
If there was something else, okay. So we can figure those as a group generally right now, which is a clear ask, okay.
If I could ask a question, you know, coming, coming into this midstream, after you've completed the master plan and are working through it, I'd be very interested to hear a little bit about the, the analysis that went into the jail expansion? Kind of like what, you know, what some of the, the data and factors are that, you know, can help you, help you understand, you know, how much space you need and, you know, what kind of your future occupancy? I'm not sure what the, quite what the right word is, but the, you know, how mu, how much, how, how full the jail is going to be? You know, the, the thing that's kicking around in the back of my head is, I, you know, I've tracked the Norcore jail on the gorge, you know, that serves four counties on, on the gorge and, and you could make the argument that, that they built that out at a time where they, they thought they were going to need a lot of, a lot of capacity and actual trends haven't borne that out and now they're really struggling to operate in a financially viable way because it, you know, it's not being as heavily used as they had anticipated, so.
I think Captain Schultz could probably speak briefly to that, maybe not so much to the information that was used in 2014 to establish the size, but maybe to current operations.
Yeah, and that's a great question, the analysis. Under COVID, you know, our numbers for last year is not going to be predictable for the future. We know that prior to all of this being underway, our numbers were reaching 300 to 320. Our capacity in our main jail is 362. We, we've done one expansion back in 2000, I want to say 14, 2014, where we really just added more jail space and that was really to warehouse people. Jails across the nation are changing. We're being asked to do more. There's little resources on the outside to protect the vulnerable people coming in. And one of the things we wanted to do with, with the jail system in the future, and again, we want to be able to, right now, we just want to move forward so we can get some of that data to see how we move, move forward. But we want to be able to implement alternative incarceration programs for judges, to be able to assist with parole probation, being able to come and use our jail more effectively than what we have right now under the current construction, and get out of warehousing of individuals and start bringing the outside in to assist us with all these individuals that are coming in with the drug and alcohol, the mental health issues. The stabilization center that the sheriff had worked hard on to get into our community has paid off for us on a number of levels to be able to know that there's help for people that may be creating crime based on their addiction or their, or mental health. Those are the individuals that if they do come to a jail because they've committed a crime, that won't be able to allow them to go into these systems, that we're able to manage them more efficiently. The sheriff's office itself, Station 10, as we grow with detectives and staff, we're, we're outgrowing this facility here and some of that would be able to combine to make, make it more efficient for the public to be able to come in. And then, of course, booking, to be able to make booking more efficient so officers can come in, get the individual taken care of, and then get back out in their community. Those are the things that we're looking at. So, not necessarily expanding jail space like maybe Norcore did. I'm, I'm unfamiliar with what they did in the past, but really to look at our efficiencies in our jail, to give us more room for public defenders and such, to be able to use, utilize our jail system in a more effective manner.
Interesting. Yeah, yeah, and I still need to come and, and take my tour and would love to hear more about this kind of, you know, you know, modernization. I mean, that, that sounds like modernization, you know, modernization of operations and needing, needing the right facilities to match that. So, we'll be very interested to talk about that more. Thank you.
Remember yesterday, you know, last week, we mentioned, I forget all the meetings running together, last time we were together, 2006 election was last time we talked about, it was, it was on the ballot for charter form of government, but also there was like a $40 million bond for building out the jail at that time and the voters turned it down. We could have, I think it was 2006, we could have been in that same spot where we overbuilt right at the time it was not going to be the capacity we needed and the voters turned it down at that time. So that's pretty, you know, pretty brilliant on the voters' part at that time, but as I say, it was a big ask and it just didn't happen. Remember, because Multnomah County built the whole facility and it never got opened even, so we almost could have been in that spot except for the voters' choice. So it's pretty exciting that we have that history now. We didn't do that. And then another comment about the jail operations, I mean, I absolutely given some, some guidance here from my point of view. Kitchen, laundry, parole and probation services, you know, mixed services. I mean, I see that, you know, that facility, we just need to kind of bump out some few spots and provide some resources around you there. So that, I do support that at this time. You know, in, in the big picture, because we've got other projects on the books. So getting back to the, kind of the ask for today, and we can talk about other things, I'm not going to stop the conversation, but community service shop, parking B expansion, kind of, are they both ready to go now or just the shop would we be talking about?
Both are ready. We have them packaged as one request for construction bids.
And it's.
So, we're ready to advertise and, and probably open bids in, within three weeks or so.
And it's in the annual budget?
It is. Commissioner's call specifically in, in the current year.
Yeah, so this is just an opportunity as a governing body to acknowledge what, what has come to us, what, what's ready to go and kind of the understanding of is there any resistance or questions about this at this time? So one question I have, which we could maybe put in a one-page or after this is, you know, the shop, there's a memo you provided, so it does have the shop kind of a line drawing. And this is, this is the kind of stuff I'd like from our project review committee. You know, what, what choices are made for a building like this that if, if somebody had, you know, five acres and wanted to build their, their shop, their man cave or whatever, lots of terminology, you could go down there. What, what choice?
The woman cave?
Oh, yeah, the horse, whatever. But, you know, what, what choices are different to go from, you know, kind of residential to commercial construction? When I look at this, I see the cinder block base or whatever it's going to be, you know, maybe the door, the heftiness of the door and security of the building and insulation. So that's the kind of stuff that I'd be thinking of. What's the delta between something that somebody might build in their backyard or this commercial, public building?
Right, and, and the things you spoke to are the, the obvious differences and really this is not so much a shop as it is a building in that it meets energy code, has accessible restroom, has, you know, typically, we're building for 30 to 50 years in terms of doors and hardware and those kinds of parts of the, the building process.
With daily commercial use opposed to?
Right. And the other challenge, you know, if, if, I think I, in that memo, it details some, some square footage costs and some of the considerations. One of those is the, the location of utilities. And so in this particular project, they're a little bit further away, that, that means some cost there. And then in terms of, you know, we'd provide accessible parking in the parking expansion, those kinds of things that go into a project for public use on a public safety campus that maybe are significantly different than if someone were building a shop for agricultural use or, or their own personal use.
Well, and one of the things I think of is, you know, if I'm going to tell my wife, honey, I'm going to shop and it's only going to cost X, I might not tell her about the trenching cost for the utilities or the fact that we don't have a concrete floor in there yet or something. So I'm just pointing out the fact that, you know, this is a fully loaded, complete design with, and you can't, you can't sneak the last things in afterwards. So I'm just kind of trying to find the differences between public construction and, and.
Lee, is this going to have two restrooms then, separate restrooms in this building?
It would have a single, a single-use restroom, just one restroom.
That's what I thought. I thought that that was one of the cutbacks.
Yep.
I think Lee nailed it on the utility extensions and then the associated parking lot and ADA concerns and such. But one other aspect of this that differentiates it from residential would be the design costs to prepare permit drawings as well as bid documents for, to use for competitive bidding process.
Yeah, once again, you're kind of fully loading the front end of that.
Right.
Because a homeowner might say, okay, I want to build the shell and I'll deal with the rest later. Wouldn't even design possibly plumbing or bathroom facilities.
And as I mentioned, you know, energy code is significant. I, Dan would know the specific, but I think we're in the ceiling, we're either at R49 or R60 in terms of insulation. So that, it's very different than what you might see in a agricultural-style shop, beverage storage building.
What is the cost of this estimated to be then? I know I've seen it.
Yep, it's in the, the community service shop memo, where I have it laid out. I just want to refer to it so I don't misquote the number. So this is a budget estimate based on a couple of different sources, but for the shop building, we're at $363,750 and then for the parking expansion at just over 200,000, 208,744. And Dan, feel free to speak up if I'm misquoting, but those are our, you know, rough order of magnitude budget costs and what we budgeted for this year. And then, of course, we go through the competitive bidding process and, and we'll see where that aligns with the current market conditions.
That's correct. And part of the building costs includes the, the utility extensions, which are pretty significant up there. And then we also performed a geotech exploration report, so there's a little bit of rock excavation and stuff, not only for the trenching, but also the building pad and such.
Great. Good information. So, yeah, what's the action for this? I mean, is there a vote, the commissioners, or just acknowledgement that it's budgeted and we're proceeding?
Well, commissioners, we had, we had hoped to get sort of just informal support for going ahead and issuing the bid documents on the shop building. We were ready to go. You had mentioned the facility review committee, which certainly we can do, that would set us back in terms of the timing and issuing the bids and approval to the extent that there are, you know, changes that would come out of that process. But this was in full design mode frankly before we had set up that committee. That's why we had gotten to the point we, we were in terms of being ready to go. And then, as you know, the committee was just formally approved and set November, December last year, so.
Well, so I have a specific request, so we'll see if we can get there. Just, and it was all mentioned verbally today, as I say, a one piece, one page of paper that kind of the difference between residential, commercial, and that could go to the review committee. It's kind of, let's proceed on the project, as I said, make sure we're all on the same page. Proceed on the project and it could just be one of those bullet items for the committee to, to look at and say, okay, these are the differences between, you know, Tony's Dream Shop and, and the, the service shop that we're talking about. But I mean, that's kind of, that's what we got stuck on. What's the difference? This truly is.
So what is the area of the parking lot? Do we, is it, do we have a square footage?
I believe we do. Dan, did you have that, hear that question? I think in one of your spreadsheets, you have the square footage for the parking lot?
I wasn't prepared for that. Let me look here.
We can get that, certainly get that information for you, Commissioner.
I think stalls is, I think it's 14, 14 or 15 parking stalls, but then we also have an approach out to Pochols Road, which is, includes, you know, sidewalk and ADA accessibility from the sidewalk. But let me look real quick for square foot.
So, yeah, I think the goal today is going to be confidence in proceeding with these two shovel-ready projects and, you know, kind of verbal from all three of us is what your opinions are. And then practicing, working together about the next big projects that can be on the horizon. As I say, when I think of the big picture, this is Deschutes County, we have population growth, we have tax-assessed value growing, not that that's a function of what we need to build, but it's population and activity-based. We're going to have some big capital needs. We talk about the courthouse expansion, you know, just the, the services at the jail. Parole and probation is, is a project we, we got real close and then we backed off this last year and we could be talking, you know, five and $10 million, if we package them up, we could be, any number, you know, it's how, what do we feel comfortable as a governing body, annual budgeting, to do some of these big projects? The jail, I mean, sorry, the courthouse expansion, what was it, a rough order, 18 million or some big number?
I think in our last estimates that, that, you know, over time continues to creep upward.
Well, but.
It's not going down, we know that.
That kind of number though, correct?
Right, we're in the probably 20 to 22 as a starting point at this point.
So, but, yeah, so we need to digest the scope of that, as I say, as a governing body, as an organization and in the community for people to support, you know, the business-like decisions we're going to be making in the near future. And this isn't, doesn't all have to happen in a short period of time, but we may be doing, we, the organization, may be doing this for quite a while, rolling out.
Commissioner, you had asked recently for an update of a presentation that Greg Munn made to you 012, 18 months ago, that listed all of the potential capital projects that were looming for us, cost estimates for each one, and then potential sources of revenue for each one, meaning existing cash reserves and potential financing. So, we heard that and we're preparing that presentation, so we'll be coming back to you soon with an updated list, which will look similar with all of the potential projects, estimates, the extent we have them to this point, and then potential funding sources. So each of the ones you mentioned, the big one, of course, as you know, being the courthouse expansion. So we'll, clearly, we'll be doing that as part of the budget process for FY '22, but we understood that you'd like to see that sooner than that process, so that's what we're preparing for.
Yeah. Well, and it's just good for the organization to be up to speed on the, the big picture and because we, we're talking five, 10, 15 years out also, you know, some of these things, they're, they're going to need to hit earlier, but we're going to need to plan for the next one also. So then it's a function of either debt management or, or, you know, just revenue management for the long-term also. And if, just like we saw, the consolidated annual financial report, there's, as I say, if you look in the back section there, general obligation bonds are off the books, we don't have a lot of full faith in credit, we've seen them drop off, we have minimal debt per, per person in the county or whatever that, you know, the way it works, and we have a growing population and needs. So there's some big intersections and decisions. So, yeah, aiming towards finishing our morning session here, is there support for proceeding with community service shop and parking B expansion as budgeted? And it's not a vote, it's just making sure there's not resistance to proceeding at this time.
I would just say, in the big picture, we have a rapidly growing community, we need to expand our services and our, expand our facilities to meet that. In this particular case, I'm. In this particular case, I mean, the, the history of the desire to have a stabilization center displacing some of these other activities and then, you know, needing to, needing to, you know, needing to address that, you know, to give people the, the working conditions that they need to get their job done, I, I think this is a very compelling project and I would support moving forward.
You're talking about the community service shop and the parking lot?
Correct.
Of course, yes. No, it seems like excellent things should, that should be done sooner than later, so.
Great. Okay, well, yeah, so there's support at this time. As I say, they're, they're currently budgeted, this is just kind of the restarting, the change in the, the commission balance a little bit, and everything else we've mentioned. I mean, a lot of good stuff out there right now.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity and we'll move forward on, on these projects.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us, everyone.
Thank you.
At this time, as scheduled lunch recess, in the last few weeks, we've been reconvening at 1:30. Is there any thoughts or cautions on that, instead of 1:00 I'm referring to?
1:15?
Well, I'd, I'd rather keep it 1:00 or 1:30, just so we don't have to remember which, which number we choose, if we, you know, so I'm just, yeah, so at this time, let's reconvene at 1:30, just like we've been doing the last few weeks, and we'll see how it goes. Okay, welcome back and thank you for joining us, Deschutes County Board of Commissioners Meeting. This is afternoon session for January 27th, 2021. Next agenda item is item number six. So we're, at this time, we're gonna convene as the governing body of the Deschutes County 911 Service District to discuss two items, six and seven, a contract and an MOU. Sarah and maybe Jonathan Spring? There you go, Sarah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sarah Crosswhite, Director of Deschutes County 911. And joining me on the call is Chris Perry, our Operations Manager, and Jonathan Spring, our Systems Manager.
Great.
So I am here today to discuss our P25 radio system upgrade project with you. This is with ODOT Wireless and L3 Harris Corporation. And I'm here today to seek approval for signatures on both of those documents. I think you guys have them in order in your handouts. If you don't mind, I mix it up a little bit, or is that okay?
Sure. Just acknowledge which one we're looking at. So one's a MOU for state master switches, the other one's equipment for L3 Harris Technologies.
So I'll speak first to the MOU with ODOT Wireless, and first I'll give you guys a little bit of history. I outlined it a little bit in the staff report, but I'll provide that again just for everyone. So we purchased, ODOT Wireless purchased a Harris P25 digital radio system in 2010 that we operate on today. They began the deployment of the system in 2012 with ODOT and OSP users. In 2016, Deschutes County 911 and ODOT Wireless combined the Deschutes County radio sites with the already established state radio sites and entered into our master agreement with the state, which was for 27% of the total system utilization by the district. We went live on the P25 system in July of 2017 with our law enforcement and then in public works as well at the same time, and then followed with our fire users in May of 2019. So when we went live on the P25 system, the environment was the Harris version of 10A.0, so a software version. Like all technology, it requires ongoing updates and maintenance, and subsequently, ODOT Wireless is now ready to move Harris to that 10A.4. So from 10A.0 to 10A.4, system production release, which is the most widely released and tested version. Any questions so far?
Uh, 27%.
I think you should speak faster.
Oh, no.
I am so sorry, you guys.
It's a call-taker thing, isn't it?
Slow for Sarah.
Yeah, exactly. It's a call-taker thing. 27% of the, the system, so when we think of that is about a quarter of the system, so that's, is that kind of the statewide system that, or, or is it a central Oregon section of the ODOT system? Just a way to think of it.
Yeah, so it's our, whatever our 27% of their entire system is our utilization, and that's what we pay for.
Yep. So this is quite a commitment for Deschutes County. And then remember, just from my experience, the big picture is, this is Oregon State Police and ODOT, kind of the big main users at the state level. Deschutes County partnered, putting this whole transition and system in originally, knowing that we could just take this step with them. And, and now, yeah, a year or two ago, we made that commitment to say, okay, are we gonna go on the upgrade path together, which is another point in time, because after this system was put in place, we could have said, okay, well, we'll subdivide ours out. So I just remember, that was a choice by us as a governing body a couple of years ago also, to, to continue the partnership.
Yes, thank you. So the current upgrade requires a hardware upgrade and replacement to our critical equipment at all the state sites, as well as all of our Deschutes County sites. So the upgrade package from Harris to ODOT carries a capital investment of 1.8 million and includes identified maintenance increases. Based on the 2016, our master agreement with ODOT Wireless, Deschutes County 911 is obligated to pay the 27% of the annual support cost, as well as the capital investment for the upgrade. So you'll see in the documents I provided, that leaves Deschutes County at, I believe we are paying, let me check my numbers here so I give you the exact number, we are at 229,133, so that is the 27% of the ODOT's investment into the project. So in your package, you'll see the proposed ODOT Wireless MOU. This was created by ODOT Wireless and reviewed by County Legal, and this document is in lieu of amendments to our 2016 master agreement. And the intent of the MOU is not to delay the project implementation any further. We know we had some delays again this year due to fires and stuff that was going on at the state. And this MOU, once approved, will operate as a placeholder until the Harris upgrade project is complete. So once our upgrade is done, then Deschutes County 911 will work with Legal and ODOT Wireless and Oregon DOJ to incorporate the appropriate sections into the MOU and make a permanent for our master agreement. Any questions on that one? So the second document in front of you is the contract with Harris Corporation. So we are also engaged with Harris directly, and this is for the specific hardware upgrades on the project for our radio sites in Deschutes County, so our five sites that we need to upgrade. These upgrades will be done in parallel with ODOT Wireless upgrade, and our equipment will no longer interface with the larger ODOT system if we don't do this part of the contract with Harris. So the upgrade contract with Harris is specifically earmarked for the equipment and engineering that'll be needed for our sites in Deschutes County. And so that, that's about 197,526 for that agreement with Harris. And last year, the district budgeted 500,000 for this upgrade project, knowing it was upcoming, and as right now, with these two numbers, we're coming in at about 430, so under budget. Any questions?
It was nice to know that it's going to be new equipment that was tested at the factory, and then they ship it to us, so we should have a smooth transition? That's what we're thinking, right?
Yes, so we did our kickoff call today, and there's been a lot of preparation. ODOT has been working really hard to create plans for a test environment, this to be tested. ODOT will go first on the upgrade, and then we will follow. So we're hoping that they can vet out any bugs before we go with our upgrade, and so that will be very helpful to kind of see what happens as they go live, and then we will proceed. So we're looking at probably fall is when we will actually do the cutover for our agencies over here.
Go ahead if you have.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions. So if I'm, if I'm following this correctly, our state and county systems are now integrated. The state is upgrading to 104, 110A4, and, you know, to continue to be able to interface with them, we need to upgrade as well. And I, what I, what I couldn't really get a sense of from the packet, and I may just not have known where exactly to look, is what's actually better about 10A4 versus 10A0? I mean, there, there is a lot of kind of nice language about, you know, like robust and current and, you know, like, you know, technologically advanced, but like, I didn't really get a sense of what is, you know, what, what is actually different and, and improved?
So my understanding is it's a software upgrade and it's the features that are improved in it, it's the newest version. Again, I don't have an exact list in front of me, I certainly can get it, but this is, this is the, let's say, when you upgrade a computer and the old version is, there's things, there's bugs or things that they work out as they upgrade. I think that's the intent, is they upgrade the software to the newest version that cleans up anything that could be a potential bug in the previous system. And as the hardware starts going bad or unsupported, you purchase the new hardware to support the continued system.
Right.
I mean, that's kind of my, just my non-technical thoughts on it.
I, I, like, I, I know that when, you know, many of us use Windows and like when they, you know, in the last couple of versions of Windows, there was one where people said, you know, this is different, but it's not necessarily better. Um, you know, I just, it would be, I would really like to know, you know, how this one is actually better. But I, I also get it that, you know, if, if we wanna stay interfaced with the state system, we just have to do this. Just, you know, it'd be nice to know, like, what is actually better about, about this system that is leading the state and us to make these investments.
And I can start, I will request a list that I can provide you as well.
So the, I think I asked that a while ago, and the one thing I picked up is the concept of the, the handheld or mobile devices will be optimizing back to the, the best tower quicker, so then the connection's faster, which is just optimizing, but I couldn't take it farther than that.
Speed, speed, there's a lot.
Yeah, but it's the best tower quicker was the concept that I got. But as I say, that's not a very technical statement.
And Sarah, when would we expect to see the next upgrade after this? Is it like every three years?
So they push out a version, I believe, every two years, so there is another version already existing, but this is the version that they recommend going to. This is the one that most of the users are on, this is the one that's, you know, tried and through at this point. So I think what you would do would be about two to three years, we'd be on this one, and then we'd upgrade to the next. And those costs are built in, is the, the maintenance and the advancement in the software as it continues on.
I think one of the other big picture items is here, we don't have multiple systems by multiple agencies in Deschutes County at this time also. I mean, there may be a few other systems out there, but Bend Police, Redmond Police, Deschutes County, Blackbeet Ranch, Sun River, you know, all the players are basically using this system with their own channels and, and, you know, it's, it is consolidated. So this is a, kind of a big-ticket item, but it's, it's the one for everybody now too. So it's probably, it's probably more cost-effective in case these agencies are all doing it themselves. So that's, that's the other thing to think of.
Partnership is good. Yeah. My, my other question is related to the MOU, and I, I was sort of tracking how we have a master agreement, there's a timeline for revising that, and we wanna do this MOU right now, cause it'll expedite our process. But I, I was wondering if you or County Legal could, could explain or could, you know, play devil's advocate and just say, you know, are there any advantages to just waiting for the master agreement process to, to, to make these changes?
I'll let Dave take that one.
You know, as far as technological functions, that's gonna be the, the science tech folks, including Jonathan and Chris that are on the call, but my understanding and what we've been operating from for, for quite some time is if, if, if we're not able to enter into some sort of a gap bridging agreement with ODOT, then we're really not in a position to move forward with Harris. And without having that, we, we face the opportunity of not having the appropriate equipment we need to maintain interoperability and also having much higher costs with Harris down the road. So this has been driven and motivated by the state, and their concern that doing any major amendment or revamp of that 2016 master agreement is going to take months upon months, perhaps a year or more. It, it, it ties into ODOT's larger reach and their interoperability, you know, I think right now, we're the only one on their system, but they've, ideally, there was an intent at some point to have other users on their system, which would obviously reduce some of our costs as well, but... costs as well. But so ODOT's looking kind of larger than just Deschutes County, and, which is one of the reasons apparently why, if the master agreement has to go back through the, the internal processes there at the state, we're looking at perhaps 12 or more months. And in that timeframe, I think we're going to be, at least my understanding at one point, was it could be 15 to 20% higher costs on the Harris equipment and software. That's the best I understand it. Again, I see we've got some technical folks on it that might be able to speak more cogently on that than I am. But that's my understanding.
Thank you. Those are some good reasons to proceed.
Any other discussion?
Sarah, I'm just curious, do you have a total of the calls in 2020? Was it up or down from 19? Do you, off the top of your head?
Chris, I think you might have those numbers. Do you, by chance?
First phone volume was just over 300,000 for 2020.
Thank you.
Was that more or less than 19?
Slightly more. I think we were in the high 270s in 2019, and just over 3 or 305 for 2020, off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
So we definitely want our systems working, and it's critical. Especially, I bet you were busy on Friday, weren't you? Last Friday? We had that wonderful little countywide storm, except for Levine.
Yeah, I think they reported over 100 crashes.
I, I saw a lot of them.
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was wild in here.
Was that a record day, do you think?
Well, it's hard to say. You know, every year you have your first day, so.
I mean, we could give it an award. That was the most crashes for 2020.
It was an ice rink everywhere, huh?
Yeah, it was, it was bad.
At this time, looking for motion and support.
So I move the board approval of Deschutes County 911's staff's signature of document number 2021-104, the MOU for the state master switches update. I know, I'm sure, we want to do them separately, don't we?
Second?
Okay. So acknowledging this is staff signature of, of this agreement at the state level. If it was that master agreement, it'd be at the board level of signature. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair vote yes.
And then I move chair's signature of document number 2021-018, the radio communication systems equipment by L3 Harris Technologies Incorporated.
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for those updates. So it was significantly busier for your team.
It was.
Okay. Well, let's hope you get those, what, four people are unfilled positions at the moment? So I know you're looking.
It's been challenging. Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, good luck.
Job opportunities at 911.
Yes, thank you. Have a good day.
At this time, we will reconvene as the governing body of Deschutes County. Item number eight, second reading, consideration of a plan amendment and zone change. Matt Martin?
Thank you, Chair Debone. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Matthew Martin, Deschutes County Planning Division. As noted, what's before you today is consideration of second reading and signature on ordinance number 2021-002. This is a proposed plan amendment and zone change from plan designation agriculture and zone exclusive farm use to rural industrial proposed by Anthony Assetti for properties up in the vicinity of Deschutes Junction. Board conducted second, excuse me, first reading on January 13th earlier this month, of which it was approved by Commissioner Dare and Chair Debone, with Commissioner Chang abstaining as he did not participate in the, the proceedings last year. So before you, again, is a consideration of second reading on this ordinance. I will note that as instructed and directed at first reading, staff corrected errors on Exhibits B, the plan amendment map, and Exhibit C, the zoning map. Within the text of the body of the map, it erroneously referenced rural, excuse me, residential industrial instead of correctly rural industrial. Made those corrections at the direction of the board. Those are the only changes that were made since first reading. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for making that change and acknowledging its change also. Ready for a second?
Yes, I'm ready. I move second reading, the consideration of the board's signature. Number 2021-002, the plan amendment and zone change from agricultural exclusive farm use to rural industrial.
By title only?
By title only.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, by title only.
And I'll second it then. So then calling for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
I'm, I'm still going to abstain.
Okay. And I'll vote yes also. So at this time is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-002, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to change the comprehensive plan map designation for certain property from agricultural, agricultural to rural industrial, and amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, the Deschutes County zoning map, to change the zone designation for certain property from exclusive farm use to rural industrial. Could be motion for adoption possible now, huh?
Okay, I move adoption of ordinance number 2021-002, the plan amendment and zone change.
All right.
Do you want any more? You're good?
And I'll second it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
I'll still abstain.
Yep, abstain. And chair votes yes. So that's a land use matter that started, started a long time ago, in fact, but it was, yeah, concluded by the previous commission person. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. I'll note that this adoption did not include an emergency clause, so it goes into effect in 90 days, that being April 27th, 2021. So from this point, I'll work with administration staff to obtain the, the final signatures from the Commissioners, and, and we'll get this recorded and in process to next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Item number nine, preparation for public hearing, Highway 97 campground, conditional use and site plan review appeal. Cynthia Smith.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So for the record, Cynthia Smith with the County Planning Division. This is a work session, just to kind of get you in the mindset to have a public hearing next Wednesday for a campground, a private campground just north of town. It's a conditional use permit and a site plan review for a private campground. It will have, the proposal includes 15 sites, 10 10 sites, five yurt sites. There's a caretaker's residence. There's the, it's in the zoning multiple use agriculture. And the hearing will be on February 3rd, next Wednesday. So a little history here, this application goes back to 2019. It started out as a much larger campground with twice as many sites. It had showers, and it had probably a couple other things. The applicant modified the application twice, reduced the sites, removed the showers. There is a lengthy procedural history that's noted in the hearings officer's decision that reopened the record multiple times. In early 2020, the hearings officer issued her decision. It was a denial. The applicant, the property owner filed a timely appeal. And as the applicant, or the property owner applicant, appellant was considering modifying the application as part of this appeal, COVID hit the United States, and ultimately the applicant extended the land use review clock to the fullest 215 days that they are allowed. This was under the second modification, land use review clock. Just for the, for reference, when somebody comes in and applies for a modification of application, the land use review clock of 150 days restarts. So we were operating under the second modification. In late 2020, on November 30th, actually, the board accepted review for this. And in doing so, they also accepted a third modification by the applicant. So there's many file numbers associated with this. I'm not going to go through all of them, but there is a conditional use permit, two site plan reviews, two modifications at the lower hearing level. There's an appeal of the hearings officer's denial and one modification. The applicant is Eric Huffman with Beacon Engineering. The owner and appellant is Sean Cormandy, and they are represented by Garrett Cross Tech. The address of the property is 64061 North Highway 97, and it's just north of the urban growth boundary. And you do have a map in your memorandum to try to give you some perspective of where this property is located. The hearings officer denied the campground because the applicant did not propose a shower facility. This is a requirement under county code. They also did not provide adequate sanitary facilities, lavatories, which included two hand washing stations. This is an Oregon administrative rule, 918650 standard. We do have in our code a connection to OAR 918650. So there's the requirement to satisfy both county code and Oregon administrative rule. The hearings officer also found that the applicant did not demonstrate that the, there was adequate water available to serve the campground. Of course, septic feasibility to accommodate everything. There was, she also found that it did not meet, I don't know if it didn't meet lock coverage, it's just she was not able to make a call on lock coverage compliance. And then because of the evidentiary deficiencies, it resulted in the hearings officer having a difficult time approving various other sections, including two, two areas in Deschutes County Code, and then four sections in the Oregon administrative rule. The property owner, Sean Cormandy, appealed the decision with two assignments of error. However, they did come in and apply for a modification. This is the third modification. And it was in order to provide the opportunity to the board to review this with, in relationship to showers, hand washing facilities, adequate water supply and the such. So the applicant proposed to change the two toilet cedar building to a toilet shower lavatory building. I think it's going to have two units, two stalls. They also provided additional information regarding the septic system that would be necessary to treat the wastewater in the campground, also the water demand and water supply system. They provided a, some information regarding, regarding that. So at the lower hearing, there was quite a bit of opposition. So I would expect that we will have some at next Wednesday's hearing. The immediate neighbor to the south owns three properties, Kramer Farms. Kramer Farms, Aaron Lafti is the individual behind Kramer Farms, and Kramer Farms hired Liz Fancher to represent them. So they are one of the opposing parties in this, just so you know. And I'm going to back up a little bit. Although the hearings officer calls out things about showers and wastewater and, and water supply, there were some arguments about other aspects of the, of the proposal, including outdoor amenity that's required with a campground, also noise and traffic and a lot of other things. So I would not be surprised if some of these issues come before you again because the board accepted this appeal with a de novo hearing. So everything will be on the table again. If you want to see, there's a, they, they pretty much argued about everything, and that is on, I think it's on page three or so of the hearings officer's decision. There's a summary, long list of everything that was kind of addressed by the opposing parties. For, just for record keeping, I just want to mention that the electronic documents that I provided to you with this meeting's memo is slightly incorrect and incomplete, and I apologize. I will provide a corrected version with your hearing packet. There's going to be a little repetition, but I just want to make sure that you and the public has the correct version. Now, those Commissioners who do have binders, you do have the correct versions in the binder. It's just the electronic copy that we uploaded to Minitrax is incorrect. So I will provide that, among other things, to the, at the hearing, any comments that come in prior to the hearing. At the, the November 30th meeting, the board did agree that we should provide some time limits for testimony. And I, one of the, this is one of those things that at today's meeting, discussing what we want to let the applicant, appellant know for time, time to testify, and others, how much time that they would have to testify. I think we mentioned maybe 30 minutes for the applicant and appellant's team, and everybody else would be three minutes. But if we could discuss that as well today. So that's just my overview of what's coming next week. And if you have any questions or want to discuss anything, I'm here.
That was a good overview, a long history on this one. And, you know, kind of, a new application is, is the big picture here. You know, it's got a lot of maturing, and then now there's more information, but we'll get there. I do support 30 minutes for applicant and appellant and three minute time on testimony. These can end up being multiple hours, even if we put this kind of structure around it. And we sure want people to be able to provide information on the topic. So any thoughts or opposition to that? Okay. Okay. Any other questions? So I will be doing it electronically from a laptop and, you know, maybe print a few pages out if there's notes or anything. I do, I do like to have some kind of, you know, the packet for the item as the starting point. So that works to have some kind of a staff report each time. But I will be relying electronics. I, I just figured out my battery, my laptop turns off real quick if it's not plugged in. So I got to change that setting because I have to log in every time I turn over here. But we'll get there. Any?
I'd like to follow you in the future.
That's fine.
Electronic versus binder.
Especially when we have two and three binders, it's just still one laptop. So, yeah, anything substantive question on this application at this time?
I think it's got quite a story.
Yeah.
I mean, this is broader than the, this particular issue, but I, I'm, I'm very interested in, in questions around campgrounds in, in, in the county. I, I think that we, I want to understand what the constraints or limitations are on them. I, you know, that, I'm, I'm curious, you know, I, I see a potential need for more. So understanding what kind of, what the, what the code says and, you know, what the constraints are compared to the, the community need.
Yeah. Well, and this, yeah, so this is MUA 10 zone conditional use application. So that's the starting point for this whole thing. Now, this is the reality of how you get approval for it. Or denial. I mean, yeah, so we're going to be the quasi judicial here at this point.
Yeah, no, and this is, this is a particular set of neighbors who have, you know, a particular set of reserves.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks for the introduction. We'll see you in a week on this matter.
Great, thank you. I just want to note, Commissioner Chang, it is kind of difficult to hear you on this end, so I don't know if you need to move your microphone, but just wanted to let you know that that's how you're coming across, if that's all right to say. But thank you, and I will look forward to seeing everybody next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Item number 10, marijuana license status update. Tanya. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, wonderful. Tanya Salzman, Senior Planner, Deschutes County Planning. I'm here with Adam Smith from the Legal Department and probably assorted others to give you all a general state of the state essentially on where the county stands with respect to marijuana, all things marijuana. As we know, it's a dynamic issue. It's been changing a lot, what with the opt-out and various legal adventures, I will say. And, you know, just because of the opt-out doesn't mean that the whole marijuana issue is put to bed. So we thought that it would be beneficial for the Commissioners, especially given Commissioner Chang being new, just to give sort of a general overview on a bunch of different points about marijuana in the county. So I provided the Commissioners with a memo that goes through all these points. I'm just going to go through those section by section with the opportunity to discuss or ask questions after each section, if that sounds good to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Okay. So first on, firstly, just the numbers. I gave the, the board a table just showing the current and potential number of marijuana businesses in the county. Currently operating, meaning that there's a land use permit from the county side and an active OLCC license. There's 19 producers, four processors, one wholesaler, and one retailer. And then there's the, the category of potential to operate. Now, these are the people that we've referred to in the past as sort of in the queue. They've received their, their land use permits from the county, and they're waiting for OLCC. And I can go into details on that. Sometimes the wait lies with OLCC. Sometimes the applicant themselves isn't ready yet. There's, there can be many reasons, but there's about 13 producers in that, in that bucket, two processors, one wholesaler, and one retailer. I should add that we've seen, I believe, about two licenses thus far this year, this month this year, and approximately two, I think, the entire last year. So I do understand that OLCC is trying to kind of pick things up on their end because there has been lots of delays on their end. And I'll go into more of that in the future because that's, that has been an issue with our applicants. So that said, the existing plus potential for production, that leaves us with 32 producers and six processors. And the number for wholesalers and retailers are, in theory, infinity because the opt-out did not address wholesale and retail. Only production and processing is prohibited in the future. So we only are dealing with those who are kind of through the county gates, as I like to put it. There can't be more. They cannot submit new applications. So that's the universe that we believe can potentially eventually operate, assuming nobody else drops out or has other issues.
I have a question. So for producers' application and approval with the 13 pending, possible pending, is there an expiration on land use approvals there in that scenario?
There is, and I'll go into that a little bit later, but in theory, the, the local land use permit expires after two years normally. And I guess I'll just talk about this now because it does.
Okay, that's coming, okay, yeah.
Yeah, 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 no, it's all kind of a big, it's a big bouquet. Basically, the, the land use expiration.
Such a positive statement, it's a bouquet.
Can't, I can't avoid the, I'm sorry. They just write themselves. They do, a local land use expires two years after the approval, if not, if the use isn't initiated. So in other words, if someone goes through the licensing process and gets their license, they're good, they've initiated the, the use. If they're in this kind of mid-range, middle bucket where they're waiting, if they are still waiting for OLCC and two years go by, they can expire, in which case they're expired. They no longer have a valid land use. They can, however, apply for an extension, a one-year extension with the county, which is a pretty simple, you know, one-pager and a fee that extends it for one year. I believe they are eligible for three total expiry, extensions. A bunch of our applicants have done that, and some have not. Some have, have let their land use permit expire for varying reasons, which I'll go into in a little bit.
But, and I got to imagine though, that there's, you know, there's some state legislative effort behind some of the positions that have been taken. So if OLCC is the culprit for not being able to exercise a land use authority, somebody's going to cry foul. So I just, I could just see it coming. If, if it ends, it may just fade away quietly, but I could also see, you know, a reason that there would be an override on our possible development approval extensions.
It has been a little bit tricky because people, you know, when we remind them of their extensions, you know, it's, in all, not all cases, but in some cases, it's, it's no fault of their own. They're just kind of hanging out and waiting. So it's an interesting situation, and we're trying to kind of deal with it as flexibly as we can while still, you know, adhering to, to code. I should note about these numbers, I've alluded to it already, but a few, actually more than a few, about a dozen applicants have dropped out essentially of the program. These are people who received their land use approval for marijuana production or processing. They let their land use approval expire. A lot of, some people were sick of waiting, they told me this anecdotally, or they were losing money on their property, kind of waiting for OLCC, so they opted out essentially to, they're not in the program anymore. Some have unwittingly let their, their permit expire. And, yeah, so that number has, has reduced drastically, especially in the last couple of years.
So it was up to like 49, wasn't it? Sorry, Tanya. It was up to like 49, I thought, at some point, so.
That was the number of total approvals, yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah. There were a couple of, a couple of doubles because sometimes someone can apply for a license and then apply for, you know, a larger canopy or some sort of modification. So there's a few double counts in there. There's a couple of funny things like that, but yeah, 49. And I believe with the two, the two that were under kind of legal consideration over the last year, that bumps it up to 51 in terms of the total universe of people who have ever been approved. Yeah, and so that is.
If I may.
Of course.
On those last two cases, Commissioners will certainly be talking about those matters later today, but just to clarify, those haven't been approved quite yet. It's an issue we'll talk about later today. And also related to this conversation, one of those two cases does still have a pending OLCC license application. Our understanding is that the second case, that they withdrew their license application with OLCC. And so this, this issue and navigating these turbulent waters with OLCC very much could come up with one of those two applications.
That's correct, and that's, I believe that's captured in our, in our potential number as well. So, and that was kind of a late breaking, late breaking addition to those counts that have been a little bit fluctuating the last couple of months.
And to say it even more directly, even if that land use application is ultimately approved, to our knowledge, they don't have a pending license application in front of OLCC, and you need both land use permit and license to operate a marijuana business in Deschutes County. That issue, of course, will be between that applicant and OLCC, but in terms of the numbers and understanding the, the scope of the total number of marijuana businesses that ultimately could be operating in Deschutes County, I just wanted to note that nuance.
Does the, does the two-year permit kind of window start, I mean, we, there's, we still need to make some decisions about, about how we're proceeding with those, those disputes, but I mean, if those two get a permit, is the permit dated sometime in the future from now? Or is it somehow tied to an earlier date where they applied or?
I believe it would be, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Tanya.
It would be the, this new date that there, that there's approval by the county.
Yeah, their, their, their two-year clock would start, if, if the permit is ultimately issued, the two years would start from the issuance of the permit.
All right, moving right along, a little bit about potential code amendments. As the board and the public is aware, ballot measure 9134 was passed in November 2020, which is the opt-out, and that prohibits the establishment of new marijuana and processing businesses. Obviously, all of those who are existing are still good to go. They may continue to operate pursuant to the conditions of approval that they were approved under. And those provisions exist in county code right now. Staff suggests that the board could direct staff to prepare code amendments to just clarify that, to just, you know, make sure that it's, the existing are still, you know, subject to this code chapter where there are no new applications permitted. Because right now, if you picked up the code, you wouldn't really know if there's an opt-out. So that is one suggestion that we have, as well as just clarifying that retail and wholesale remain unaffected. Now, onto annual reporting. I furnished the board with a summary email about this back in December when we concluded the annual reporting process, but I'm just going to provide a, a quick update on that now. Every year pursuant to code, applicants or marijuana producers, processors, and wholesalers and retailers, all of them have to submit an annual report to the county. They're due by February 1st, so they've been trickling in as we speak. And then we do site visits. In the past, they used to be in the spring. Last year, they were derailed by snowstorms. This year, they were derailed by COVID, but we've managed to do them all during the summer mostly and some, some early to mid-fall. COVID obviously threw a big wrench in everything for both our side as well as the applicants. We tried to be as flexible as possible. There were some people who actually were quarantining, et cetera. So we ultimately got them all done. We did it with reduced staff, and we observed 100% compliance. And this happened last year as well. We, we are not, we observe the conditions of approval with respect to land use, most of it. We're not kind of peering under, you know, that kind of thing, but all of the conditions of approval in terms of setbacks, odor control, noise control, those were observed as compliant. And in many cases, a lot of the applicants are really eager to show us what they do and show us their, their cool new odor control system or what have you. It's very.
And I was, I was just writing down the fact that odor control report or review may be interesting because we sat here for many hours learning about, learning about that. And, you know, just for my benefit to understand what, you know, what's really working, what is the maintenance cycles, carbon filters opposed to, you know, all the different technologies that were mentioned. So I was just thinking that same thing. It'd be interesting to see some of the systems in place.
I mean, I think honestly to be, to editorialize, a lot of them would love to have you come out and see yourself because they're, it's pretty amazing. It's, it's pretty fascinating to, to look at. But, so we did observe that. We kind of smelled the immediate area and determined that they are all operating in compliance. And for those who are not yet licensed, we still go and check and make sure that they're, they're not growing. And that was all 100% compliant like last year. Let's see, and we intend to do that, that same thing this year again. Hopefully, we will not be derailed by any other thing that happens to the world. So that, that's, that's going on. And I do have a couple of points about the annual reporting process, which brings me to the next section. There's been a couple of requests to staff and community development from property owners who have marijuana businesses proposing some changes to the code regarding the marijuana. The first one is actually a request to remove the annual reporting process, which, that would involve a text amendment to the county code. They argue that there has been a 100% compliance rate for the years that we've been doing these, these reports. And they also argue that these businesses are already regularly inspected by OLCC. And then they just note the time, the time involved, and just they have to kind of take time away from their business, and it involves staff time as well. That's what their arguments are. These, these things, I think, may be discussed in more detail as part of the work plan discussion with the Community Development Department, but I just wanted to get that on the board's radar. The second request that we've received has been from a marijuana retail business owner, which is actually the only active licensed one in the county at the moment. There's one other who's waiting for their license. And they were asking if it's possible to amend the code to extend the possible retail hours. OLCC sets parameters, and the, the Deschutes County Code parameters are a little bit narrower, so they have, you know, shorter hours, which this business owner is arguing is creating a disadvantage for them. I believe that they have submitted a letter to the board regarding this and might comment on that as, at a citizen input and a future meeting. So those are two items for consideration regarding the annual reporting and the retail hours of marijuana business. Does anyone have any questions thus far? Or thoughts, comments?
Could I ask about the, the work to do the inspections and the fee? So there's a $796 charge that, that the county levies. Is that actually how much time the, the inspection and reporting takes? Or, or, you know, is it, does it, is it, is the staff time actually more than that? And we're, you know, where we are subsidizing this inspection, you know, because we want it to happen?
That is a good question. It is a plant, what's called a planning inspection fee, and Peter or Nick might be able to answer the, the derivations of that cost. I will note that we only charge that to those who are licensed, so that's those 19, because those are the ones where it's taking more staff time, we're really going through this checklist that's been developed. And then in general, I will say it does take some staff time, kind of administratively, to kind of file everything and get, get everything organized, coordinate all the site visits. So it is a significant amount of staff time. I'm not, I can't answer your question at the moment if that fee covers the directs, the direct time, or if it's just a best effort to that. I'm not sure if Nick or Peter have, are here or have answered.
I think you can, I think you can add a second comment.
Thank you, Commissioners. Nick Leac, Deschutes County Community Development Director. For the record, we estimated that that would be the cost a couple of years ago when we, when the board adopted the code, and we estimated the time that it would take to review the land use decision, to coordinate with the property owner, to conduct the inspection, to finalize the inspection. And I, I think it's pretty darn accurate. I think it's very close right now to, to all of the time and the coordination and the effort that it takes to complete that process today for those licensed, especially because several of those are loc, are, they're not located, of course, in the, well, some are, but not necessarily in the, in the immediate bend vicinity. So it does take some time to get back and forth and to coordinate, and then to tour the property and to complete all the work. So I, I think that, I think the fee's accurate for the time and all the resources required. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Nick. All right, well, if there's further questions thus far, I will go on to our correspondence with OLCC.
Tanya, before we go on, and Commissioners, although these two citizen suggested text amendments, I think will certainly be discussed next week as part of CDD's work plan further. If possible, I would like to return to the staff recommendation that we do some minor code amendments to reflect the opt-out. We went through that topic really quickly. We could also talk about that more about during CDD's work plan conversation next week, but I think it would also be an adequate time if the board wants to direct staff to start working on those amendments now. We could, we could talk more about that topic. Or you can wait till next week, is my point.
So, okay, well, just help us with the concept. So CDD work plan, put in the package of possible code amendments, and, you know, Adam's saying that from the, you know, our legal staff's point of view. So does it fit nicely into next week, or is there some value in today?
Thank you, Chair DeBoeck. We, we haven't discussed this, Tanya, Adam and I haven't discussed this. Really, the purpose of next Monday's work session with the board is to look at our current work plan and to see which projects to initiate next. These two requests, we included these in this memorandum, just so that you're aware of them, but we were thinking of these two, these two text amendments really being, being considered by the board as part of our next year's fiscal year work plan. But I think Adam raises a very good point that the other one, to reflect the opt-out, is one of those that we may want to consider sooner, consider sooner than later, just because that is in place today, and it's helpful to inform our customers of what, what they can and cannot do. Yeah, thank you.
It's not really a work plan conversation as much as it's a, we need the board's direction to initiate those text amendments, and they certainly would be helpful. I've fielded a number of phone calls since the, the county commissioners essentially opted out, what was that, 18 months or so ago, on the implications of the land use code? And does that mean we, somebody could submit a new application? So there still is a fair amount of confusion on how the current land use code operates in conjunction with the opt-out, and it would behoove the community if we clarified that, that issue. that issue.
So when I look at the two requests for modifications, remove reporting and change retail hours, I think of it kind of in two different categories. Remove reporting is kind of a big umbrella issue, and retail hours is just a, you know, one of the segments, you know, it's a subset of the activities, which could be applicant-initiated. I guess they both could be, but one's, one's kind of affects everybody. And if there was multiple retail, it would affect more than one, so I'm just talking it through a little bit. And the driver for the text amendments relative to the opt-out, opt-out does kind of bring out the, you know, a package of activity or a subset of activity. So what's the will of the board? Because I, I'm not real clear on what we would do today, but the will of the board for, I kind of see it as three pieces. Do we package it up and start doing something with them?
I think.
And I hadn't really thought about it.
Talk through each, each of those three items?
Well, we can't, yeah.
I think clarifying what the opt-out did is critical, that it should be done now. But the other two items on here, I believe you said we're going to look at at a later date, that we weren't really making a decision today on them, which makes sense. You know, I mean, to ask for removal of the annual review, I, I like the annual review. I wouldn't mind keeping it. And if the cost is fair, and it just shows that we really do want to make sure what's going on in Deschutes County, don't forget, Measure 110 is going to be coming. And if we're really clear on this, at least it gives one vision out there.
Well, if we're, if we're jumping in on the second of the three items, I mean, I would say that if OLCC is already inspecting these people, if we're dealing with a known number of entities, or, you know, like a defined number of entities, of which many are now known and have been inspected multiple times, I would be in favor of reducing, reducing inspection reporting requirements around those existing operating businesses that have been through inspections multiple times now. That certainly, you know, someone who, who has their permit, you know, hasn't got their license yet, or has their permit and has their license, but hasn't, you know, in our mind, hasn't started operating yet, we want to go and make sure that they're not growing anything. And as businesses come into the system, you know, probably it might make sense to do inspections there the first year or two, to, you know, just to check them out. But people who, people who've been 100% compliant multiple cycles, I, you know, it may be revenue neutral, but it, that doesn't mean it's not a waste of time. So that, that's my perspective on that.
Well, so at this time, it's putting it into a package of effort is kind of the, the big step. And help me through the process. So reporting could be a community discussion. You know, I've been in this room where we've filled it up wall-to-wall a few times on these topics. Is that what we're talking about here? Like, once we put in a package, it would be a public code package amendment process, which is going to be wide open for comments? Because then, you know, if we see a lot of engagement and energy, we'll find out, oh, this is a hot topic still. Or it might not be. That's kind of my thought. Any thoughts?
Commissioners, although.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt.
I was just pointing at Nick so you can't see him in the room, so we're half Zoom and half personal today. Go ahead, Adam.
I would, even if we process, so even if the, so there's three potential amendments on the table. Two of them are recommended by citizens in our community. The third is recommended by staff. Even if the commissioners directed us to proceed with all three text amendment concurrently, I'm not sure we would do them as one package, because they're really separate topics that should be addressed separately. So we could certainly process things all at the same time and try and, you know, double up on public hearings, but I don't know if we would want them all as part of, all three text amendments as part of the same ordinance. So that way, they could be appealed separately, discussed separately, and the like. And I think the two citizen-initiated or citizen-proposed text amendments, part of the reason why we wanted to brief you on those matters now is I suspect that there will be testimony next week as part of CDD's work plan conversation from members of the community who are advocating from one of those two topics. I really view those two topics as a separate matter that can be sidebarred for today's meeting. It was mostly informative that we just wanted to bring you up to speed on those issues. The staff-initiated text amendment, I don't think we will talk about at the work plan next week. It's really a separate matter, and we're therefore separately asking for the board's direction on that, that effort today.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chair DeBoeck, I completely agree with Adam, and I think that the staff-initiated text amendment is really housekeeping to reflect what's happening now on the ground, and the other two could be more substantive. I agree.
Well, okay.
If you're elective, one is, one is pretty necessary.
Yeah. Well, and we're already taking positions on something here, so let's half a step back. Do we support putting the Valid Measure Opt-Out Code Amendments Project forward as kind of a separate project? Housekeeping.
Clarification.
Housekeeping, yep.
I, I'm supportive.
And I am too. Commissioner, do you?
Yes, I already said I was.
Okay, so that's one step. And then at this time, how about we bring this to next week's work plan discussion? It already, yeah, we already started kind of stepping into it, into the topic, not into it, but, and we'll go next week with that.
Okay, thank you, and sorry, I should have spoken up earlier, and I, we could have avoided all that confusion, but thank you for the direction. We'll start working on that text amendment here in short order.
Yep.
Clarification, board. Nick, the item next week, that's not expected to be a public hearing, though, is it?
Right. Thank you, Tom. We did not notice it as a public hearing, so I know some citizens have asked if they can speak, and some have shared, well, it's not a public hearing, so there's a public comment period at the start of the meeting, but as there is at most board meetings, but it's not, it's not testimony on behalf of the work plan, which we're planning to have as early as March this year. So it's really, but it's, but it's at your discretion, at the chair's discretion, to allow board comments, if, if so or not. And it's helpful for us to know, because we have a couple of people asking if they, if they can provide comments. So if you have any thoughts on that now, that would be great. Thank you.
And I think we've received direct emails and some contact on these topics already, which I know the response has been it could be an applicant-led code amendment, or please provide input, which, which is that input. So is this Wednesday next week?
Monday.
Monday.
The first.
And this is a bit outside, but I've been having a lot of conversation from the community about the odor of hemp. So is anything that they're learning about the marijuana odor that's really working, something that could be applied to outdoors? Tonya, so keep that in mind. Yeah, there was a community in Sisters on the other side of Highway 20 that was really impacted this last summer because of 50 acres of grow, you know, within a couple of miles of all these residences. So, yeah, what can we do about that odor? And I know it's EFU, so there's nothing we can do. But if there's something that does work.
And the other, the other big difference is we're talking about marijuana being grown inside a building. I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's all sorts of things you can do to control odors coming out of a building, but, I mean, hemp is being grown in open fields, you know, in a, you know, it's completely federally authorized, so it, I mean.
What it means so is, Commissioner Chang, is that the people that live in that neighborhood then can't go outdoors, because, they were telling me for six weeks, and I realized that it's grown outdoors. That's actually probably one of the reasons why they put marijuana in Deschutes County indoors, to control the odor, and because we have a very, very short growing season. And we saw so many fields, as Tonya and I have discussed, this year that were not even harvested at all. I mean, they were, the plants were just left in the field, and I'm not really sure why those growers made those decisions, but it happened quite a bit all over Deschutes County.
And I'm not, I'm not denying that there's odor associated with hemp growing, but this is, I mean, you can boil this down to a basic right-to-farm issue, and if you own, if you zone lands in Deschutes County, you have a right to grow legal, legal crops. I mean, we might have concerns about someone having a confined animal feed operation. That is going to generate a lot of odor as well, but they have a right to conduct that kind of legally authorized business. So it's, and, and the reason I was just connecting the hemp back to the marijuana, like, I just don't think that there's anything we can learn about odor control inside a building that would then be applicable outside. So it'll continue to be an issue, but then, you know, it boils down to this right-to-farm question.
So anything else on this topic, Tonya?
Not unless the board has additional.
And now, so, yeah. This is good, good communication at this time.
No, this is great. This is great. This is exactly why we're here, so I appreciate it. If it's all right, I will go on to the next topic, which is.
Well, so, yeah, acknowledge, there's support for proceeding with that, that code package for housekeeping amendments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to touch on correspondence we've had with OLCC. There's, there's a lot. There's a few topics in there, and I will rely probably a little heavily on Adam to give the legal nuance to it, but, and I'm not going to go through every, all the minutia, he said, she said, because then we'd be here forever, but I will give an overview, and then we can discuss as appropriate. So the first thing is the simplest, which has to do with expiration. As I noted earlier, often applicants let their land use expire, which means that in theory, they're, they're not allowed to produce marijuana. We wanted to coordinate with OLCC. We made an effort to coordinate with them to be able to let them know, hey, this property owner has expired, don't give them a license, because, you know, they have them in their system, there's not really a back-and-forth channel of communication. They, in a nutshell, basically, the only sort of correspondence that OLCC recognizes is what's called a land use compatibility statement, or Lux, and that is basically the sign-off from the land use permit to the state agency, saying, you know, this is, this is the permit. That is initiated by an applicant. Once they get their local land use approval, they apply for a Lux, which is a fairly simple document, and then that's processed by the county, by county planning, and then given to OLCC. OLCC's idea was that we could just issue a new Lux, saying, hey, these guys have expired, and then that, that would translate to them not issuing a license. However, it's current practice in CDD that we, as a department, do not issue Luxes on behalf of applicants. That has to be initiated and signed by and paid for the applicant. So unless they decided to, you know, they knew that their, their property had expired, and they decide to come in and get the Lux, which is highly unlikely or impossible, that's not really a channel that we can, that we can use. In light of that, we offer to send a letter or do some sort of correspondence with OLCC to indicate expirations, but unfortunately, the only, the only language that they will kind of process or understand legally to them is that Lux. What the solution is, or what the interim solution is, is we're still going to send them letters saying FYI, the property attached with this Lux has expired. They can do with that what they wish. If then they continue and issue a license to someone whose land use approval has expired, that will come back to us, because we will be aware of that license being issued. We will then initiate code enforcement, most likely, or go through that process, and as part of that, OLCC will know to take action. Sometimes that results in pulling their license or some other modification. So it's a little bit of a circle. It's not the most efficient. That's what we were trying to avoid. We were trying to nip that in the bud to make it easier for them, but that's, looks like that's not going to be happening at the moment. But, so we're in the process of issuing those letters right now, and hopefully eventually we'll be able to be on the same page, because it does seem like a, a lot of extra work for everybody, and, you know, difficult for the applicant to suddenly be getting a license they shouldn't be getting. I don't know, Adam, you have anything to add to that, or, or not? Ah, you're muted.
Oh, I was caught with mute on. My apologies. I could certainly add some more color commentary, but I think, Tonya, hit the high points with that specific topic with OLCC. I would say, Commissioners, that part of the ongoing, and I think it's fair to say even frustration, is OLCC's need and desire to constantly look to state statutes and regulations, when the truth of the matter is, there are no state statutes or regulations or rules that address what has occurred here in Deschutes County, and that's leading to interpretation difficulties. The statutes and rules were all drafted from a perspective that communities would either opt out or opt in and stay that way for all of time, and that, of course, is not what's occurred here in Deschutes County, and so we're, we're breaking new ground on every single one of these issues. And because of that, every, every time a new nuance comes up, it's required an interpretation, and reasonable minds can disagree. Our advocacy has always been that OLCC needs to understand the action from a land use permitting perspective, because that's what Deschutes County, that's what is directly within our scope of authority and control, and they're looking at all of these issues through their license protocol, and that's leading to some conflicts, which I think will be simplified even further by a couple of the other conflict categories that we're going to talk about here in a minute.
Thanks, Adam. To go on to some additional conflict categories, as you put it, change of ownership and location. Now, I should note that these are, right now, these are theoretical. These have not yet happened, but we can anticipate that at some point, eventually, at least one of them is probably going to happen. So we're trying to kind of get in front of that, and I'm going to try to summarize fairly simply. It gets a little complicated. I will say that for me, the easiest way to understand it is, the way the county deals with marijuana is, we are land-based, property-based, whereas OLCC is people or applicant-based, and therein, that's where the conflict is, in terms of moving things. So the first scenario that we anticipate is someone who has an OLCC license and a local permit, they're all, they're all good, they want to sell their property to somebody else. For, as far as the county is concerned, that's, that's fine with us. The permit runs with the land, they're good. But OLCC considers a change in ownership as a new license, even though it's in the same place, and that's that difference between the applicant versus the property. So that would not be viewed as acceptable, excuse me, by OLCC, and that's one of the Second conflict is someone who has a local permit, but they're waiting for a license, they're in that bucket, waiting. They want to sell their property before they get their license. This is another case where it would be considered fine by the county. Again, that permit sticks with the land, and this would also not be viewed as acceptable by the OLCC, because again, this would involve a new person, a new applicant, and so that was not our intention. And obviously, if it involves a new applicant, we're not allowing new applicants. So there's the rub. That's the conflict, if that makes sense. And then the third, just, I know I'm going over these pretty quickly, but the third potential scenario is someone who has a license already and a local permit, they're all good, they want to move. They want to move their operation somewhere else, to a new property within the county. Now, we don't see that as okay, because it travels with the land. So if you're going from property A that has a permit, you need a permit for property B. It's, we are not issuing permits anymore. You can't apply for it due to the opt-out. It's unclear exactly how OLCC will require, require paperwork for that, if they would require a new Lux or not, but if the case is that they don't, and they therefore issue a new license to this person in this new location, where we have not issued a permit, it would be similar to the expiration scenario, in that they're issuing a license to someone who lacks a local permit, and it would have to circle back through a code enforcement process, and then, then OLCC would deal with that as they see fit. So essentially, these things, these three issues boil down to the conflict with how the county sees everything with respect to the opt-out, which is very local, as, as Adam said, narrow. We're looking at it land-based versus OLCC, and they're viewing their licenses as applicant-based, and those are, have the potential to create some conflicts down the road. And we're trying to coordinate with them, but we'll see how kind of it shakes out legally. I don't know, again, Adam, if you have anything to add about that? I know I went.
Yeah, I, I mean, at the end of the day, I think OLCC may be inviting unnecessary litigation on their part with some of these topics, but that's issues that they'll have to address with aggrieved licensees. The only thing that Deschutes County really has within its scope of authority is land use, and that's part of the reason why I wanted to circle back and get the board's direction to. to initiate those housekeeping text amendments, because again, we can clarify some of these issues through our land use permitting. At the end, to operate a marijuana business in Deschutes County, you need both a license issued by the state and a land use permit. So even if OLCC, what we would consider erroneously, issues licenses to folks who shouldn't be getting licenses, because they don't have a land use permit, they still can't operate, because they can't get the land use permit. It's, again, as Tanya noted, it's mostly just trying to coordinate and avoid unnecessary government bureaucracy. I hope we can ultimately get all of these issues clarified, but returning to the numbers that Tanya presented at the beginning of the presentation, some of those numbers are still in a state of flux because of these unique issues.
Thanks, Adam. That's a, that's a good summary of it from the legal side. And I should, you know, just a general thought about this is, you know, I think in a lot of these cases, nobody really anticipated where this would go, because we didn't, you know, in the very beginning of the program, OLCC probably didn't anticipate having such demand for licenses, then, you know, and that created difficulties for them, slowdown for them, and then COVID, and then, you know, we had our own issues here. So it's a lot of just sort of unfortunate circumstances, I would say, and we're all trying to deal with it as best we can, but we wanted to get these things in front of the board, just to know that these are, these are out there, and so we're trying to address them as best we can.
So nothing else, it's a high probability the board will be asked some of these questions from citizens in your community as well, so we wanted you informed with as much knowledge as we can give you.
Thank you.
What did the state do with their moratorium? Because we were only following the state moratorium. Did that continue, or has the legislature opened it up? Does that have an end date, do you remember, Adam?
Commissioner, I have to look into what ultimately happened, but practically, I do know OLCC is issuing licenses again. I don't know if they're accepting any new license applications, but we could look into that and get back with you.
Okay.
I think they're still backed up to the point where they're processing stuff that came up, came in before that moratorium, but yeah, as to the question of new licenses, we can go back to you on that.
Thank you.
Those last few items, those are Deschutes County specifically because of our opt-out with previous approvals? Nobody else in the state's going to be in that spot?
Other communities could be in that spot in the future, but to our knowledge, no other community is in that spot currently. We're the only county that was opted in, approved a number of marijuana businesses, and then subsequently opted out. That opt-out was then, as we all know, affirmed pretty overwhelmingly by the voters.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I ask about one other scenario? An existing, so someone who has an existing permit, an existing license, if they are interested in modifying, changing their project, you know, changing, you know, staying in the same place, but, you know, like adding to their building, or, or something like that, what, what does that look like in terms of a land use process?
Looks like Nick's ready to conquer that one.
Yeah, Commissioner Chang, Chair de Bone, I just, as we were sitting here, I just sent the email to Tanya and Adam, and asked if we should consider that scenario in the code as well. I think it was 2019 or 2018, the state, and I've got a good memory for this, the state passed Senate Bill 395, and it addressed exactly that issue. If a county were to opt out after it had opted in, and so those changes are allowed, and if I recall, and I should recall correctly, it's through the non-conforming use process. So if I recall correctly, they have to demonstrate that there's no greater adverse impact from the changes that they're making to their, to their, the approvals that they have on their property, through their approved facilities that they have on their property. And so that's something that I look forward to coordinating with our team, if we should incorporate that into the code during this housekeeping amendment process as well, given that that is reflected in state law today.
Well, yeah, if it's in state law, people will be interested in that one, obviously. And not everybody, but there'll be a subset.
Yes, yes.
And that statute was specific to marijuana production, which is the vast number of the permits, the land use permits that we've issued. As I recall, it didn't address processing, so if a processing operation wanted to amend, we would analyze that under our existing non-conforming use code provisions. But I do think we can add some quick sentences in the housekeeping text amendment, noting that any amended operations will be considered non-conforming use, and expansion will be considered pursuant to DCC provision XYZ. I don't have that provision at the tip of my tongue, but we would, I expect, just reference back to our existing non-conforming use provisions and procedures.
Yeah, great question.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
It always helps.
Thank you, that's all I have. Open to discussion on any matter related, of course.
I think we're all set at this time. We'll get to code enforcement, because we're going to be getting back to some version of this also.
And that's Monday.
So one agenda item today, and do we have executive session also today?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we will be back for the topics that are better suited for an executive session later today.
Very good. Okay, so item number 11, code enforcement overview.
Thank you, Chair de Bone, are you prepared for me to begin?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Well, it's my pleasure to kick this project off, this updating our code enforcement policy and procedures manual, and any applicable amendments to our code. This project is on our annual work plan this year, and it's been on our work plan for several years, and just due to a lot of staffing issues and COVID and a lot of other factors, we're just now able to get to this project, and we're very pleased to get here. Before I get started, I just want to recognize Angie Havner, she should be, she's, I see she's right there, she's the, our administrative manager, she is the supervisor for, the manager for the code enforcement program. John Dryly, I see John, I see John's coming up. John is going to present today, he's a code enforcement specialist. Dan Smith is a code enforcement specialist, he will be presenting as well today. So we'll keep it relatively small today, but I just want to recognize that we have four code enforcement specialists, thanks to the board and your support and approval for those positions. We also have Chris Beam, who is not with us today, he's in the field, I'm guessing, and Joe Graziano as well, they're both currently, currently in the field performing their work. But that's not all. We also, our program also includes, and John will put this into, into context in one of your, in a slide here in just a few moments, but our program also includes a terrific partnership, of course, with our legal counsel, led by Dave Doyle, he's our primary contact now, but we work extensively with, with Adam, with John, we've worked with Chris and Amy, the whole team. The Deschutes County Sheriff's Office, just an absolutely critical partner for us with this. Right now, it's Laura Kennard, she, I just, she's just exceptional, but we, and we work with many people in the sheriff's department, they're such an important partner. The solid waste department, Tim Shimke, and primarily, we're responsible for administering those codes. We also coordinate with the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, on a lot of things, and we're exploring a new partnership with Ed Keith, with our county forester, with the weed ordinance, and we're not going to get into that as much right now, but I just want to recognize the entire team as we, as we begin this overview update process with you. We set this up in two different meetings, today, and then again in a couple of weeks. Today, our goal was to provide an overview of the program for you, to really explain what it is that our program does, how they do it, kind of who does what, in a big picture, and allow as much time for comments and questions as possible that you have. We would then come back in a couple of weeks, and you have the matrices in your packet, and we would seek your direction on those matrices in a couple of weeks. Not today, unless you're, unless you, there's something burning and you'd like to do so, we're, of course, happy to, happy to do so, but the guy, the key is, was today, is to present those matrices with some of those decision points that will come back in a couple of weeks, but the key is, we still at least want to provide that overview today, so you have plenty of time to think about those. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to turn this over first to John Dryly, and then Dan Smith, and then we'll, we'll all be available for your questions and comments as we go forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to John. Thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioners, it's good to be with you this afternoon. John Dryly with Deschutes County Code Enforcement. What we've put together for you and want to start off with is a slide presentation, is just an overview of the code enforcement program. I'm going to tag team with Dan Smith on this. What we're envisioning as far as questions, we have a, we've planned some question and answer periods in the presentation, a little break. That said, we're pretty user-friendly, so if there's some clarification we can make as we're going along in the presentation, we'll do that. I do have one housekeeping item that I want to check in with you on, and this is that I omitted a document with the materials that we submitted to the board, and this is a section of Deschutes County Code, section DCC 22.20, and I just want to ensure that that is now in the packet. I'm seeing a nod from Nick, so it sounds like we're good to go there.
Yes, it's in the packet.
All right, very good. So, without further ado, let's go ahead and jump into-
Oh, yeah, that was the other one, yeah. So I was referring to the manual with the highlights, but yeah, we did receive that also.
Okay, great, thank you, Commissioner De Bone. So without further ado, let's jump into this slideshow, and I'm going to share screen on this one, so bear with me a second. Okay, and then just to check in with the group, can everybody see my shared screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm seeing nods, all right, great. Okay, so again, this is our overview, and I'm, we're going to start out with the manual itself. The procedures manual is actually developed almost 26 years ago, and it was through a pretty public process. A task force was assembled to make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, and it was from that effort that we kind of have the manual that's in place today. The nuts and bolts of the manual are very similar. That 1994 manual talked about kind of a two-pronged approach to code enforcement, and one of those would be that we would be reactive to signed complaints, and then the other aspect is that we would initiate a county-led proactive code enforcement effort. So it set the framework for that type of approach to code enforcement. Most recently, we circled back to the Board of County Commissioners in 2014, and through a really similar process in what we're doing here today, there were no major program core changes from that coordination with the board. There was, however, a recommendation for a change in Deschutes County Code, specifically for the exploration, development of a provision that would provide for the restriction on development permits on a property that had a code violation on it. And one of the requirements in that text, as it lives today, is that this has to be an adjudicated code violation, established either in circuit court before a code enforcement hearings officer, or perhaps through a voluntary compliance agreement. So what has changed since 2014 is quite a bit. One, we heard about in the last section, the legalization of recreational cannabis, and as, as we know, the board had the opportunity to develop some time, place, and matter rules regarding this new industry. And when this came into place, code enforcement circled back to the Board of County Commissioners for a discussion of code enforcement and what we'd be doing in enforcing in these new rules. And one of the key developments from that coordination is that we would begin accepting anonymous complaints for unpermitted marijuana operations. Since that time, in 2014, we've also had some minor housekeeping amendments to Deschutes County Code, expanding the list of staff members that could issue citations and prosecute code violations, and also some housekeeping amendments to align county code with state law. With respect to our code enforcement program itself, there's been some significant changes, and one of those, the most startling, is our complaint volume skyrocketed since the 2014 review. Dan's going to get into specifics on that, but almost a threefold increase in complaint volume. With that, the board authorized the addition of two additional code enforcement members. And another major change since the 2014 amendment is that we now take the majority of our citations that are issued for code violations before a code enforcement hearings officer, rather than in the circuit court, and there's many reasons for that. One of them, that from a staff perspective, we were just having a hard time getting on the docket in circuit court. So the procedures manual really sets the tone for our program, and our mission is to protect the health, safety, and livability of Deschutes County for the area residents and visitors, and this is by assuring compliance with the county's land use, environmental soils, and construction codes. And we do this with a primary objective, encouraging voluntary compliance, but following with efficient and effective enforcement action when necessary. Another benefit of the code enforcement procedures manuals, it provides guidelines for our day-to-day work, and this is everything from the prioritization of cases to recovering costs for code enforcement action, but it also dives into the nuts and bolts of, you know, case initiation, investigation protocol, what voluntary compliance looks like, and what we're striving for, and also for sanctioning code violators when we take matters to circuit court or before a code enforcement hearings officer. So the program that we have today, that all originated from that 2014 manual, is really a multidisciplinary code enforcement team approach, and this slide is intended to capture that. There's four of us on a day-to-day basis that are doing code enforcement, the boots on the ground, so to speak. As Nick mentioned at the outset here, we coordinate closely with the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office with Laura Kennard, a dedicated deputy for our program. We work closely with the county's legal department, with, we've worked with all of county council over there over the years. And then we also coordinate closely with our energy agency and other agency partners. Nick mentioned at the outset, our coordination with DEQ, which is really a growing relationship, and a necessary relationship for, for code enforcement. So the other aspect of this multi-team, or multidisciplinary team approach, is that we're heavily dependent upon the rest of CDD. The fact is that code enforcement, a particular case can involve every division within CDD, and we look to our partners in our department to help us along in the, in this process. Oftentimes, the resolution on these cases are going to require some type of permit or approval, and we're the, we're the messenger, we start the process, and then we refer people to frontline staff. And so the glue that holds this all together, I'm going to embarrass her right now, we're overseen and coordinated by the administrative manager, Angie Havner, and of course, I cannot go without mentioning that we're overseen as a whole by the department director, Nick Lelech. So this slide is intended to give you an idea of the jurisdictions that we're covering, and the first three jurisdictions fall all within that CDD umbrella, planning department, building code, safety division, the onsite waste disposal, environmental soils division. We enforce codes related to each of those areas. We also enforce codes related to solid waste. We coordinate by direct contract with the solid waste department to enforce the county's nuisance solid waste code. And for those that are not familiar, this is oftentimes viewed as junk on pro- And for those that are not familiar, this is oftentimes viewed as junk on property, that type of violation. We have a similar type of contract with the city of Lepine for solid waste code violations. That's, those four areas are the core of our program at CDD. Now, we're not the only ones that use the Policy and Procedures Manual. The County Forester also uses this manual to guide enforcement action or efforts in voluntary compliance for the county's noxious weed code. So we thought to give you a visual on some of these codes and kind of an overview of what type of violations they are. With respect to building code violations, the common instance is work without permits, whether that be a structure going out up without permits, building permits, and perhaps supplemental electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permits. On up to, and I've included on the lower photo here, a whole house being built without permits. We've had a couple of those over the years in code enforcement. With respect to zoning code violations, the most common, and Dan will get into this, are non-approved, the second or additional dwellings on parcels in rural Deschutes County. And I think that, there's a lot of talk that that, you know, that's the lion's share of what we do with respect to the zoning code, but that, it doesn't end there. That is our most complicated code, covering everything from violations along rivers, floodplains, wetlands, on up to perhaps non-approved uses in rural Deschutes County. For example, a commercial use in a residential zone, that the property's not zoned for that type of use. With respect to onsite waste disposal, a number of our cases involve failing septic systems. The upper slide is an example of a very bad failure that we worked recently, actually are still working. And for your information, that circumstance is now fixed, and it's no longer causing the hazard. The code enforcement case is still open on that property. But this jurisdiction regard, for onsite sewage waste disposal can also include unauthorized waste disposal. And the lower photo is a, of the waste disposal means in support of an RV on a property. So yeah, that also falls within our jurisdiction. The last photos on solid waste is a before and after photo, and I think this is a case that Dan worked. And this is those junk on properties type of complaints that we received, and the before and after result of our efforts in code enforcement. So there is a central theme in everything we do in code enforcement. I've heard this, and it's kind of the mantra of code enforcement, heard it over the years. And this is that code enforcement is truly a balancing act, and it's mindful of individual property rights, the rights of one to use and enjoy their property, and the rights of the community. And this balancing act affects everything that we do, from our efforts in voluntary compliance to the timeframe that we can extend to resolve a code violation. Wanted to include this slide to give you kind of a nuts and bolts, core operating principles for the code enforcement program guided by the Policy and Procedures Manual. One, we're complaint-driven. We're not going around looking for complaints, that's indicated by the manual. As it stands today, we need to have a signed complaint submitted for an investigation. There are exceptions to that. We'll take anonymous complaints for violations involving matters of imminent threat to public health and safety. An example is the failing septic system on a property. We also, as I alluded to earlier, are accepting anonymous complaints regarding unpermitted marijuana operations. Now, we had, do have, for code enforcement, that we're working on a narrow, narrowly-focused, staff-initiated proactive program. And currently, what that consists of is that we follow up on certain types of permits and approvals from the Planning Division to verify that those, conditions behind those permits are being met. These are temporary use permits, and the ones that we're working on are medical hardship allowances for a second dwelling on a property, and also for perhaps RV occupancy, temporary use on a property not containing the dwelling. We've been working, we've actually been very fortunate over the years, since 2011, to have a volunteer helping us out in this effort. And we've been able to rekindle that relationship recently, doing that work remotely. But that, that member, that volunteer is a key component of our proactive efforts. I mentioned earlier voluntary compliance, the goal of our program, and Dan's going to talk about how close we're coming to meet, hitting that, that goal. With our cases, we have a flexibility in time, but not with the code. And that's suggested by the manual. What we find in, on the ground is that each code enforcement case is unique, and property owners or occupants of a property face their own individual circumstances that are going to impact their ability to resolve a violation. And the county, the county's program, it can accommodate that within reasonable timelines. The most important key for us in working with property owners and those involved in code enforcement is that they're continuing to work with code enforcement staff to bring the property into compliance over time. The final aspect is that the reality is not all of our cases are resolved through voluntary compliance, and we follow with efficient and effective enforcement action when necessary. I'll talk a little more about that in future slides here. So one thing I wanted to point out in this slide presentation, and this is going to be a topic as part of this manual review, is that we prioritize our code enforcement cases, and there's a four-tier approach that's called for by the manual. First are cases that involve imminent threat to public health and safety. We're going to get on those as fast as we can. The second is violations involving rivers, stream, and wetlands. Third solid, the solid waste violations and building code violations. And finally, land use violations. And typically, it's the land use violation that it's an incompatible use in the zone. It's a priority for code enforcement cases. I thought to include this slide in the presentation to give the board an idea on the stages of compliance. We have the pre-enforcement stage, the enforcement stage, and the abatement stage. The pre-enforcement stage is the staff coordinating with property owners, discussing the alleged violation, and requesting their corrective action. Most of our cases are resolved this way, through voluntary compliance. If we're not able to obtain that, we will issue a citation, and we have two different approaches to this. One is to issue a citation in the Circuit Court. The other option is to issue what's known as a notice of violation and proposed civil penalty. And these are reviewed by the code enforcement hearings officer. The potential violations on these, for these citations can be up to $2,000. And then, in the hearings officer procedure, we can return to the hearings officer for continuing order of finding a violation for fines up to $500 a day. The thought with these enforcement actions are, these are really a tool for enforcement to compel compliance for continuing code violations. The unfortunate reality of our work is not all of our cases are resolved through that effort. And in instances of continuing violation, we do coordinate with county's legal department to pursue an injunction. And not, these are going to typically go in the Circuit Court with the county filing a complaint, and, and then requesting as part of that complaint in, in Circuit Court, that there be an order that the property owner abate or correct the violation, or that the county has the ability to come in and abate or correct the violation. The unfortunate, another unfortunate reality of our program, it's, as it's evolved over the years, is we're having to do this more and more. It's still not a significant number of cases, and you'll see that in Dan's slides. But the fact is that we're, we're having to do that more. And, and we're looking towards the future on what additional tools we might need in our toolbox for that type of action. Okay, so this is where I'm going to tag team over to Dan. I'm going to keep this presentation up and advance the slides as necessary, but take it away, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners, again, for giving us the time to kind of go over our program and let you know what we've been working on lately. So the, again, just really kind of statistics overview of what we view generally. So the average type of case since 2018 has been mostly focused on zoning and environmental soils, the bulk of our cases being regarding RV occupation. And because an RV occupation is outside of the zoning allowances for most of Deschutes County, it has, comes as a zoning component. And whenever you have somebody staying in an RV, we're not really sure how they're taking care of their, their waste disposal from that, which automatically creates an environmental soils case as well. So we have to make sure that both of those are addressed. So you get pretty similar numbers between zoning and environmental soils based on that number. And you can see that over the years, we've been, at least the last two years, we've covered right around, you know, 900 to 1,000 cases. With the bulk of which being in zoning, but still a significant portion of solid waste in building, the last of those. And as far as performance measures, what we like to try to make sure that we're meeting as far as performance measures is how long, or basically how long a case is taking to get closed, so how, you know, are we able to get compliance or get some sort of resolution within a reasonable timeframe? And so our goal is to try to get that case closed or resolved within a year. And as you can see, over the last few years, we, you know, got most of our cases closed from 2018, quite a few from 2019 with a couple hundreds still left, and then quite a few cases from 2020. So we've been having a tougher time meeting that particular objective lately. But I think a large part of that is just because of the large influx of cases that we've received, those since 2018, where we've, you know, gone up significantly since the last, at least, policy review has occurred, you know, almost 300%. Thankfully, with the new staff number that was added this, this, late 2020, we are going to be able to hopefully catch up on some of that and get closer to meeting our performance measures for getting cases resolved and looked at in a timely manner.
Question. So that's the second time we saw the, the previous version of the, or the policy manual revision date. Is that, is, is there a cause and effect there, or is that just a reference point, the 2014 date?
What I would gather, just anecdotally, is that it's likely just, you know, it only gets related to a policy manual change, I think, just in 20, you know, in the last few years, we've had a different group of people move into the county. The population has grown, housing prices have changed, which creates, you know, different expectations and requirements of people that I think just ends up bringing up our, our cases, as far as I gather.
Just making sure. Because I didn't see a big policy changes in there, shifts or anything.
Certainly, yeah. I think with that, it would be, I think it would be hard to find a line that we connect with. So we also try to make sure that, you know, as John was saying, our, our number one priority is, is voluntary compliance is the goal. We want to try to work with people to come into compliance rather than, you know, penalizing them into submission, as it were. So as you see with our case statistics, you know, the vast majority of our cases are closed with voluntary compliance, you know, hovering right around 80, 90%. And we do have a little bit of other cases, of course, as, you know, it's just, some people just aren't willing to work with us for one reason or another, so we do have to usually go to citation in those instances. And though it's a very low percentage, you know, roughly 5 to 10% at most in certain years. And most of the time, you know, to get that voluntary compliance, it does require us to extend timeframes to be able to meet with certain people's requirements, as John will go into in a little bit, as some of the difficulties for resolving and some of the challenges we run into in code enforcement.
Okay, which is a perfect segue into key issues that we're facing in the code enforcement program right now. We've already talked about increasing case volume. We're seeing an increasing number of contested cases. We're having to issue more citations these days for, for violations, not able to resolve through voluntary compliance. There's also an increasing number of contested cases, even when it comes to the permit application process. So as I mentioned earlier, that sometimes the resolution of a code enforcement case is to obtain the permits and approvals for the use you want to have on the property. We're finding that in some of those applications, those too are being contested. And what that means for us in our numbers is that we're keeping that case open and watching from the wing, so to speak, and to see how that gets resolved. But it is affecting, you know, is our, our day-to-day operation and the balls that we have in the air.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
I don't totally understand what that means, like contested in the permitting process. Does that mean that the, the permit, you know, that seeking the permit itself, that's a contentious process? Or does that mean you told them to get a permit and then they, they ignore you, or?
Yeah, good question, and yeah, clarity is necessary here. So what we're seeing is sometimes parties are applying for permits. This is typical, the typical one is a land use scenario. They're applying for permits, and then there's interest in those applications as there's, you know, the approval is issued for that use on the property. And those, those approvals are being appealed to Lubbock or other venues. And in those instances, we're watching that play out. And, you know, I, I think Nick can, can chime in to this. I mean, I, I think this is a common situation with a, a lot of permits that the Planning Department issues, that there's more interest in them. So it certainly has appeared in code enforcement cases. Does that make a little more sense?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome. Okay, one, another one is housing affordability. And I kind of look at this, I'm musing about this, that this has really hidden us at the beginning of a code enforcement case and also at the end of a code enforcement case in many instances. One of our more common violations is use of RVs as a second dwelling on a property or something like that, or additional dwelling units on, on properties. What I hear, and I, you know, the coworkers are discussing this as well, is that this is oftentimes, property owners are telling us that this is a violation of necessity to some extent, that, you know, housing is, is expensive in Deschutes County. So perhaps this is manifesting on the ground, and we're getting complaints about these. The backend of a code enforcement case is we're working to resolve the violation. If we're talking about RV occupancy on a property that contains a dwelling, that use is going to need to cease, you know, for compliance. But one of the things that people involved in that situation are expressing is that it's very hard to find a place to go. So we're accommodating, we, we keep the discussion going, and make sure that their parties are actively looking for a way to bring the property into compliance. But it's certainly, you know, the housing affordability has certainly had an impact for our code enforcement operations. Another key issue is the increasing relevance of what I put responded limitations, property owner limitations, renters limitations. Some of those limitations have a profile that is consistent with the Americans with Disability Act, in which case code enforcement staff is needing to consider reasonable accommodations for those circumstances. Where, this is something that we're talking more and more about with the county's legal department and navigating those waters. Another example, or another common theme we hear is limited financial resources to correct violations. And then finally, I've listed COVID. And with respect to COVID, we are certainly more accommodating with flexibility and time to help people across the finish line in a code enforcement case, help them come into compliance. But if I look at all of these key issues facing, you know, that we've identified here, these all, they would suggest that it's impacting the amount of time that we're needing to resolve our violations. So this is what we identified as a good kind of breakpoint, and I'm not sure how best to go about this. It looks like we have the ability. It looks like we have the ability to have all staff members, including Nick, participate in this discussion. But we can certainly have a question and answer period right now. And then I'll go ahead and share the screen if there's any questions regarding particular slides. But why don't we open it up for questions right now?
Any questions to start, thoughts?
Well, I know I worked with Angie a lot. She is fabulous. She is so, she is like the Nordstrom's customer service person. She will send me an email at 6 o'clock at night or whatever. But what I really wondered, because when I was talking to Tom about this, the fact that the code had not been upgraded since 2014, I realized we have extenuating issues in today's world with COVID. But I saw a situation where I felt it was like really a public safety issue, that the resident was building like an explosion. There was, there was so much, you know, tree branches, pallets, all there. And it was on a road that it was going to, they were the entrance to a one, you know, one-way-in, one-way-out road. And I kept thinking, oh, my gosh, we've got to do something faster here, because what if we do have that, what if he has a fire on his property and it's spreading and the wind is blowing, and what is it going to do to that neighborhood? I was really, you know, quite concerned. I'm thinking about it today and thinking, okay, well, at least right now it's okay. But haven't heard about that one recently. The neighbors were, you know, what is the word, attacking our lack of response for quite a while. I mean, I went out there, went up there, I think in July, and then I went out there again and really didn't see, maybe, I think I went in October. And I know Dan was involved, and he was trying to really help and handhold. But at some point in time, it's like, don't you just have them clean it up? Because it's so frightening if something really does happen, and then that whole community is going to be in danger because of the circumstances. It's like the first house down that road, and that's the only way out. So that was kind of, I'm glad we're having this talk today about code, because in those cases, I think we have to be more responsive, you know, consider, I just watched Fire in Paradise, and you see how bad things happen to people, and you've got to be more prepared. So that was something that bothered me. That was one of my code enforcement issues.
And I'll just, I'll just jump in and say thank you, Commissioner Adair. And this has been a challenging case, and we appreciate your following up. And yes, Angie's customer service skills internally and externally are certainly extraordinary. One of the great opportunities with the code enforcement manual update is, and with Tim Shimpki's forthcoming retirement, is we're really reaching out and working closely with him for these last couple of months to have him help us understand what the nuisance code is and how to apply it and to make sure we're doing it correctly and are there changes? And one of the, we were just speaking about a week or so ago, and as we were speaking, I looked at the code, and I said, well, Tim, it says that the last, this was last updated in 1991, and he, and he kind of laughed and said, yeah, it's been kind of on one of those to-do lists. And so it may be an opportunity to take a look at that code as well. Maybe not during this process, but as a subsequent process, just as in 2014, we identified some improvements to make, which we did. This might be an opportunity to revisit some of those codes and ordinances as well.
But I can't say enough nice things about, you know, your staff. They're wonderful, so.
Thank you.
Great to work with and incredibly responsive.
Thank you.
And I've been very pleased with the system. In fact, I mean, John Greeley, and he knows it, he was probably my first connection to Deschutes County back in the day, when I came in with a public building that didn't have public safety issues up to speed. And I think we ended up opening a code enforcement case in ourselves, and then him and I worked together for years on this. That's about 15 years ago. But my point, it's very valuable for just community members to understand, when you hear this thing, code enforcement, what code are we referring to? And this really, just this presentation today breaks it down very well. Because I get the calls too, and yeah, I've been very supported by everybody in the county and code enforcement and Sheriff's Office, Public Safety, Building, you know, inspections, all that. But people need to digest, what are we doing here? Why are we doing it? You know, why are you harassing me? It's like, well, sometimes people just stick out like a sore thumb, and that needs to be pointed out to them. But it is, you know, it's community safety, kind of just the development intensifying a little bit, you know, our cities and rural county, the existing parcels are being utilized more than ever. So it's a good system, and if it's time to take a look at some of these pieces, I'm looking forward to that.
And Chair DeBoe, the only other issue that John didn't mention with key issues is one of the things that we have experienced the last couple of years is our partnership with the Sheriff's Department is so strong, and they have been turning in some additional code enforcement cases. Because if we can address some of those at the code enforcement stage, then it can really help prevent significantly more issues with law enforcement, with criminal activity and other things in the future. And so they're very diligent, very careful about which ones they turn in. But they really have such a good eye for that, and it's really, it's just one more area that we really coordinate closely on. So if we can tackle things at the code enforcement level and prevent something more significant, it's, I think it's a good outcome for everybody.
I wanted to ask about the comments about, you know, it sounds like RVs play a pretty central role in our numbers right now. And in, you know, in the area of health, you talk about the social determinants of health, housing and housing affordability being one of the big ones. And, you know, if somebody doesn't have access to affordable housing, then shows up in all sorts of health issues, right? So I'm wondering if we, if this is similar, and if so, how big is that? I mean, you know, that this presentation has mentioned, you know, code, these, you know, cases have tripled in this, in a certain time period, and they're becoming harder and harder to resolve and fix. You know, how much of our problem is, you know, how much are we really dealing with symptoms of a root cause problem, which is housing affordability and homelessness?
I'm happy to take a shot at that. But John, would you rather provide the first response?
Well, and I think Dan may have a part in this as well. I think one of the questions is how often are we seeing, it sounds like one of the questions, how often are we seeing the RV occupancy type violations on multiple dwellings? Am I correct in that, Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Dan?
And I guess also, but, you know, not just how often are you seeing them, but is, you know, is the shortage of affordable housing in our, in our community the reason for those as well?
Yeah, and that, we're hearing that, one of the things, you know, the violation of necessity, we hear that. It does, that does not extend to all circumstances. It's a mixed bag regarding RV occupancy. One thing I would point out on this, and I think Dan covered it in his slide, those are tough violations for us to work. It's a core issue, you know, if we have an additional dwelling on a property, maybe, does not present a health and safety consideration, certainly a livability consideration as far as our code is, the zoning code is considered, but not, maybe not a health and safety violation. But one of the key concerns on that is, you know, what are they doing for waste disposal? So that then a case takes a higher profile. I just wanted to get that in there, in that, you know, one of the things that we're doing when we're working a case like that is trying to find out what the circumstance is and how we can, you know, work together to bring the property into compliance. Now, having said that, Dan, do you have some ideas as far as the numbers?
So I know that I have split that up, where RV occupation was separated from zoning in the past. I'm trying to look through my software now to see if I have a quick number for you to try to get some updates, and I can maybe try to get that before the end of the presentation. But as far as what I'm gathering, it seems like a, I don't know if they're, could be directly related, at least there's interference, like John was saying, anecdotally, just talking to people that are in these circumstances, whether in an RV on a property, the majority of them, you know, have expressed there's not really a great place for them to go or another option for them. So that could be related certainly to housing affordability in general. And I think, you know, for the solid waste portion of it, at times, not in all instances, of course, but there's also that potential where, you know, garbage service stops on a property, because that's something that can be a, you know, it can be an option to save money, is not to pay for garbage service and then try to haul it away in a trailer, then the truck breaks down, etc., and it just kind of becomes a problem that spirals out further.
Commissioner Chang, I'll just say, yes, I think it's a direct symptom of not only how the housing affordability in our county and region, but I hear about it from my colleagues, my planning director colleagues across the state, is that RV occupancy continues to increase, and now we have so many people displaced by the wildfires. Fortunately, the state has temporary rules, and those may become permanent, but there's so many factors that are contributing to this significant issue. And we do everything we can, exactly as John said, the first thing is to make sure that if it's occurring on a property, it's occurring as safely as it can be with wastewater disposal. And then we try to work with the property owners. Is there, are they a family member? Is there a medical issue? Is there a medical hardship opportunity? If that's not an opportunity, are they on a property where a temporary use might be allowed? So we really attempt to explore every option possible and then take as much time as we need to, to achieve compliance on those. Because it still remains a function of state law and not just county code, so we are responsible for that. But yes, I think it's a direct symptom of housing affordability in our region and across the state.
And if that's the case, then that's just one more reason for us to work on housing and homelessness issues in our, in our community, because then, then we, you know, conceivably we could reduce the, we could reduce the caseload at code enforcement, and you have that just trying to, trying to fix things that are already broken is often much harder than trying to fix things before they're a real problem, so.
Great, well, there's some comments and discussion.
One other thing I wanted to ask about is, so there were a couple mentions of, you know, suspected illegal marijuana activity. I was wondering, do you have any, any kind of numbers on that about, I mean, one of my suspicions is that, you know, A, that sometimes there are people who are illegally growing marijuana, but then B, that sometimes people see a hemp grow operation, are concerned about that. I mean, do you, do you have any sense of kind of, a little bit, can you unpack that for me a little bit, is like how many, you know, how many complaints or concerns are expressed per year about, about that issue, and how many of them end up being kind of, you know, real, you know, in this case, criminal activity, real criminal activity, and how many, how often it's just a misunderstanding and that kind of thing?
Sure, Commissioner Chang, I, John, do you want to take the first, the first, I don't want to keep jumping in, well, I do, but I want to be respectful, John, would you like to take the first response?
Well, one thing I would say is, since the legalization of recreational marijuana and this new industry, when we, when it first came on, we saw a significant caseload. And it was our, you know, one of our primary types of complaints, and we were putting the resources we could into it. Since that time, you know, I back up a second. One of the things that was apparent to us with this new industry is that some of those complaints were related to our jurisdiction, the time, place, and manner rules. A very significant number of the complaints were not related to our jurisdiction. They were perhaps related to a potential criminal matter. Since those early days, the Sheriff's Office has taken on the investigation of those types of complaints, and I think we've made very significant headway as far as the illegal market goes. Well, for one, what we're seeing for code enforcement is we're not seeing as many complaints anymore. This, and I don't have specifics, so I'm just speaking in generality, and Dan and Angie may have some more specific numbers. Looks like Dan's waving his hand. So, yeah, that's my, kind of my blush, first blush thought on it. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, space bird is looking at it. Anyway, so, yeah, I'm happy to kind of give you some numbers about that specifically. So sticking with marijuana, it looks like last, the last two years, 2020 and 2019, we've only received seven cases that we activated. So whether or not that came from the Sheriff's Office or, yeah, those are the ones that we actually created cases on. So seven less than a percent of our cases the last two years. But in 2018, as John was saying, we had quite a few more, we had 41 that year, and I imagine we had more probably in 2017. But I went back to 2018 on this particular rerun, just to make sure I have the data in time for you guys. So we didn't have very many, and as of last year, we unfounded four of them. So that means of the seven, four we looked at and determined one way or another that it wasn't a code violation for the county. And I think we referred the other ones to the Sheriff's Office, so we found that they were likely illegal grow. And then just going back, while I have the numbers ahead of me here, RV occupations taken out from the zoning code has been slowly rising the last three years. So from 2018, it was 18% of our cases with 166 cases that we looked at. 2019, it went up to 21.5%, roughly with 216 cases. And then this year, it was, or at least 2020, excuse me, was roughly 23% of our cases, and it was 197 complaints. So that's what we're looking at just for RV occupation, which I think you can probably more easily correlate directly to a housing issue perhaps.
I might comment on one item that Commissioner Chang mentioned regarding hemp complaints. We have had some complaints, especially when hemp first came online, where we started to see more and more outdoor grows. And then that's tapered off to some extent. And we do, you know, our investigation of those complaints, we're checking in with the Oregon Department of Agriculture and make sure that this is a lawful site. We're, you know, while it might not fall under our jurisdiction, we're investigating those complaints. By and large, you know, what we're, what we see is that a lot of hemp is grown outdoors in Deschutes County. There are some sites to grow it indoors. And in those instances, you know, as we understand in code enforcement, the time, place, and manner rules don't extend to those violations. So those are investigations that we are occasionally, you know, we may be closing unfounded. So just a little bit more context on that for you, Commissioner Chang.
Thank you for the background, for the, those number of breakdowns on both of those issues.
And also, I just wanted to touch on again, so it was 20, I forget, it was 23% of our cases in 2020. That's just the RV part of it. So again, usually with an RV occupation, it'll also create an environmental soils complaint as well. So likely, it's probably actually more closer to 40 to 45% of our caseload is resulting of that one complaint splits into two brackets.
So managing time, we do have another item after this in an executive session, so, I mean, there's no rush, but we should kind of aim at closure for today and plan on doing this again in the future.
So Chair DeBoe and I just sent the team an email and said, let's just, you have the matrices in your packet. These are what we'll begin to go through with you in a couple of weeks, including if there's a public process you'd like for us to engage in as we draft any amendments to the program. So John, Dan, Angie, I think that will conclude our presentation for today, unless we can answer any other questions. Thank you.
It's good to just take some brain space and think about this. Hopefully, community members are following and understanding that how seriously we take these services. You know, I've received the calls and been partners in working through this also, but you guys are on the ground, and thank you so much for what you're doing.
Yes, thank you for your work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are outstanding.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number 12. Well, how about we take just a five-minute break? Sitting for a couple hours isn't very healthy. So, yeah, five-minute break, and then we'll go from there. So, yeah, five-minute break, and then we'll go from there.
Oh, yeah. I'm like, oh, my god.
Light plan review. To establish a commercial use child therapy incorporating agricultural activities. And so the board had, it looks like this is to cover SDCs. And this January 2021 payment is the second of two payments. You allocated the first section of payments that needed to be completed in Q1. So today we're looking to see how we will fund the second pay, uh, second portion of payments to complete what was promised to Treehouse Therapies.
So I can do $500 for that? I mean, it's not really fair, though. I mean.
I'll do either 500 or 1,000 for the commitment. I mean, if you, if you wanna.
This is for childcare?
The first Treehouse Therapies.
Well, should we just split it because he, yes? Is that?
If we're, if we're all equal in terms of, in terms of dollars to allocate at this point, I, you know, I, I would love to see the, the proposal, but, but I mean, very passionate about childcare, so.
And just to, and I'm not, it looks like this is for child therapy incorporating agricultural activities, so how child therapy correlates to.
On farm agricultural.
I'm not entirely.
Sounds, sounds really good.
So you support a third of that number?
Have him do the 41990 and then.
Yeah, I'll do 500.
500 each.
Yeah, that's fine. Good.
That way it keeps.
That's how it kinda goes.
Big tippers.
Yeah. I like even numbers. See, now that 41990 will drive you crazy because there'll always be some odd amount.
And as I'm, I wanted to also call to the board's attention that you did, we did receive two last minute applications today for funding. One from the Bend Boys and Girls Club for Transportation Needs for $2,500 and another from the Hunger Prevention Coalition for $2,000. The board has hard copies of those applications and it's completely at your discretion if you'd like to consider them today. Technically, they did come outside of the, of the cycle since we had already prepared meeting materials, but I did wanna give you that option. So my plan was to go through the applications that you have in your binder and then to, if the board would like to, we can discuss those two applications at the end of today's allocation exercise.
So Whitney, where is the 2,000 listed? I, I read this just now.
Do you wanna call Commissioner Dare that there's a cover sheet that also gets submitted and that was reflected on their.
Okay. I was just wondering where you got, where you found the number because I was looking for it. Okay, thank you.
So would the board like to begin with Bicycle Resources of Bend?
So this will be working through the tabs in the binder that was provided at this point. Yeah, let's do that.
Perfect. So your first project application is from Bicycle Resources of Bend. They are requesting $2,500 which would cover donating 100 bicycles to the disadvantaged, providing and providing bicycle safety checks and repair clinics to 25 riders.
So I have a couple thoughts. I don't, I don't know that I have a relationship with any, anybody involved with this one. I mean, it's a great effort. A couple thoughts are making sure there's connections to other bicycle activities, as in there, there's private bicycle, you know, shops or companies out there. There's other transportation, you know, so the message sounds wonderful. Let's get these bicycles out to people who need transportation and are underserved or don't have a lot of money. I don't know, I don't have a feel for the connectivity. I mean, and I could've done homework before this. I haven't done it. So I'm just, just putting words out there.
They've had their 501(c)(3) since 2012, but they have, apparently they haven't applied to us before.
Any connection or, you know?
I, I am not 100% sure that it was Bicycle Resource of Bend, but some years ago I, I donated a bicycle, like an old, an old garage bicycle and, you know, saw it converted into, you know, a bicycle that was that given, given to a, a disadvantaged youth. And, yeah, I thought it was excellent.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, that program was an excellent program. And I, I believe it was Bicycle Resource of Bend, so I guess I have some first, firsthand experience seeing this organization or an organization like it provide mobility and, and transportation options to, you know, to disadvantaged people in our community. And I, I would, is this where we?
We could propose amount up, you know, any amount. I mean, you know, they're asking for a specific amount. There's possibility of reaching out and learning more. You know, there's, we could do anything.
Well, I'll do 500 just because I, it looks like it's an annual project. So hopefully when it's not snowing on the ground, they can get people some bicycles.
I, I would do 750.
Well, and put me down for 500 also. I mean, as I said, and just like we do this each time, I guess maybe I need to, you know, remember instead of just reviewing, to call the ones I don't know because now I'm in that spot. I'm like, ah.
And staff is certainly happy to reach out if there's questions that the board has, so feel free to just send us a note as well if you'd like us to. I do have a note, a couple notes on other applications that are before you today where we did do a little bit of background research, but this unfortunately was not one of those.
No problem. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. The next request before the board is from the Council on Aging. They are requesting $2,500 for heat source that would be used in the canopies that they're using through the winter as part of a drive-through meal program that is provided to older adults three times per week.
As you can see, we have, we've been connected with them a couple times already this, this year.
We gave them $3,700 in December. I, I actually have to pass on them because I, staying on my budget, it doesn't work.
Hey, um, I, I, the, the idea that we need to adapt our systems to, to be able to continue to support our, our senior population, you know, with COVID and the, the unique challenges of that, I, I really appreciate that. I was, I was wondering about the, the price tag for this project, you know? I, I, like, for example, I know that, I know that if you buy a propane tank and one of those little heater, heater elements on a propane tank, you know, that, that'll only set you back a few hundred bucks. But I don't know whether that meet, would meet the need that is being put forward here. You know, that, that's great for two or three people standing six feet apart, but I, I mean, if you need to heat up a whole tent area or something like that, then, then maybe you need this, this more extensive expensive system.
Right. And as they noted, I mean, it does appear to cover a dedicated electrical circuit, so it does sound like it is complex, but as you mentioned, there's probably more than one way to accomplish that, that need of heat.
I'm comfortable in passing at this time. Communication could be had outside of this cycle also.
Thank you.
I mean, I, yeah, I'd like to learn more, but, but does, but if we say we'd like to learn more, does that mean that, that they don't have a chance to come back till Q4 or?
Well, and there's, could be possible, you know, CARES dollars or the state, you know, there's, there's other paths for dollars. So these truly are video lottery dollars already gained by somebody through the state participation by percentage back to the counties for economic development. You know, food, clothing, and shelter stabilization is kind of the, the umbrella of things. And yeah, senior meals and keeping the area warm is, is important, but there may be other paths for that, too.
If there's, if there's, I mean, if, if this is an appropriate way to handle this, I, I do think, you know, they could at least get some of those propane heaters for, you know, a few hundred dollars. I, I would be, I would be supportive of putting $500 into that. Is that a, is that a thing? Is that a way to approach this? Okay.
We actually gave them $10,100 last year for all their different requests, you know, for COVID. Well, it's actually, the February one would've been before COVID. But then we also, they're service partners, so they got $40,000 from us both the two prior years.
There's a spreadsheet where service partners are.
So, yeah.
Oh, and I think there's, there's.
And I just, I just had dinner next to a propane heater, I guess it was. Oh, my God. The room was so warm.
Dinner next to the propane heater.
They actually had to turn it down. It was so warm, so.
There's another spreadsheet referred to as the service partners. There's, and then United Way. If we give a chunk of money to United Way, they may spread it out to the, the specific organizations. So there may be multiple paths even from these dollars to them. So this is on top of that. And you'll start to see that when we review those.
And just to.
And they're doing a great job and I'd, I'd love, you know, supporting them, so, but not at this time for that.
Still, to be, for, to be timely to potentially support a propane heater right in the middle of January, I, I would, I would, I would, I would be, I would, I would support allocating 500 bucks.
Okay. And just to clarify, would you like me to reflect the allocation now or reach out to them? And then if they confirm that that would meet their needs, allocate then?
I, I think it'd be fine now.
Okay, thank you.
And I mean, if, if they, if they wanna come back and explain how the more advanced, you know, electrical hookup system is, is really what they need, then we could, I, I guess, consider it at, at a future point. Maybe with other, a different funding source.
And I've met with Alice Ivy and I know these folks here, so I mean, you'll have those relationships at some point, too.
Thank you. The next request is from Destination Rehab. They are requesting $2,500 for the Empower Cycling Program, which would support a collaboration with Oregon Adaptive Sports by providing specialized support for the summer cycling program.
Thoughts?
I would, I would like to know what other kinds of recreational and therapeutic activities could be offered to the people who, who they'd like to take cycling. You know, for example, if, if the, the same folks could have a, a good enriching experience going for a walk, you know, or hike or something like that, then I, then I, this is such a, this is such a challenging time for so many people in our community. I, I, you know, I, then I would wanna kind of pass for the moment.
Yeah, this could be good for next quarter, too, possibly.
Okay. And we have done that previously where we kind of, we do that and, and see where we are in the, in the next quarters. That's certainly something that we could do.
Yeah. Now, I definitely am supportive of, of offering, you know, good, healthy outdoor recreational opportunities to, to people with disabilities. But, but if they're, if they have multiple options to do that right now, then, then this, this would, this may not be like an, as critical of a necessity.
Okay. I will go ahead and move on to the next grant application. This is a request from Fences for Fido. They are requesting $2,000 for fence bills and veterinary care for clients in the county. Staff did reach out to the Humane Society and Brightside just to kind of get a feel for if they're aware of this group and have relationships. And both organizations indicated that they, they are aware and had complimentary things to say about the organization and the work that, that they're doing. I believe the Humane Society gave some feedback that they think that the work that they're doing in DeShuets County is typically outside of Bend, in Lepine, and the outer areas of Redmond, Madras, and Terrebonne, so working in rural parts of the county.
So yeah, once again, I'm in a spot where I kinda like to talk to the, somebody about, from the organization. So I guess, you know, that's a realization. I don't know if, you know, I'm just thinking back, is this different than I've seen in the past? So, I mean, I do like, almost feel disconnected from who these people are, you know? And thank you for doing that research. It's nobody's fault, but it's interesting people asking for these funds. So, but yeah, some amount may be fine here. In fact, 500 kinda jumps up from my account, a number. You can put that down for now. We'll see. Fences for Fido. Anybody else?
With the unemployment rate jumping back up, I think there's some other things I'd rather do.
Well, my kind of thought process is this may be a connection to, you know, families with dogs, especially if the Humane Society is involved, and just making that connection outside of, you know, the, the family unit that may be in a house right now. So that's kind of my thought process. Not a huge investment, but if there's a few families that could have more interaction and set up a, a good environment for animals, it's an effort. It's a, get to.
Are we, do we have a chance to come back? Okay, there's, there's.
Yeah, cuz then it ends up being a balance and a quarterly allocation. Absolutely.
Cuz now, I, I sorta had a vision and then there's these two other.
I know. Well, and let's do that. Let's kind of power through these, pop some numbers in and then go back. Maybe that's the way to proceed cuz I'm in that same spot, too. How are we gonna get a balance going?
Okay.
You agree, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, so Furnish.
Yep, Furnish Hope.
Furnish Hope.
Is requesting $8,000 for a cargo trailer purchase. Furnish Hope gathers warehouses, redistributes, and delivers donated home essentials to families referred by a network of social service agencies. You'll note in their application, they provided a, an example of a trailer that was just over $5,000. And so we did reach out to clarify kind of on the, the scope of their, their funding ask, and they indicated that they are looking at trailers at a wide range of price points, so they'd be open to any contribution that might assist them. We also reached out to Colleen Thomas over in Health Services just to see if she had any familiarity with this organization. And she did mention that she has not reached out to them directly, but another agency has coordinated with them on behalf of Health Services clients, and they've fully furnished two apartments for those clients. So it sounds like there is a, a little bit of a relationship there.
That's, I mean, really what feels like needs to be done at this moment in time is to give people hope. So I'll do 500 for them. Maybe that'll help.
500 for me and maybe more.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say 750 and, and we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, so this could, yeah, cuz let's see what a balance is out to. Good.
Perfect, thank you.
But this may be a good way to proceed. Lepine Community Kitchen?
Yes, Lepine Community Kitchen is requesting $4,000 for their hot meals program.
Having, having visited and, and spent a day volunteering at the Lepine Community Kitchen, I think it's an, it's an excellent organization that provides a, a, a very important service to one of our vulnerable, you know, you know, a, a, a wide range of vulnerable populations in South County. So I would, I'd like to put $1,000 there.
I'm good for $1,000 also. It's a good time for that.
And I'll do 500.
Thank you. The next request is from Sun River Stars. They're requesting $1,000 to purchase a video camera to support their 2021 season. I did wanna make a note for the board. Your packet materials indicate that no grants have been awarded in the past five years. I caught today, you actually did allocate $2,500 in an arts and culture grant in December to Sun River Stars in support of their 2021 season. And those agreements are in process, which is why they're not reflecting yet in our system. So you, you did just contribute to this organization through the Arts and Culture Grant Program, but this request is slightly separate and for a different purpose.
So we just to give them 2,500?
Correct, through your Arts and Culture distributions at the end of the year.
Okay. I thought we had.
And Whitney, do you, do you know what that, can you recall what that was for?
It was in support of their 2021 season, and I can definitely go back and get some additional information. It appears that this second ask is very much more specific to the video camera itself.
They want a camera?
Yep.
I think, it was for kids, I believe. It was, it was gonna be a kids' program. So I know we did that.
I do, yeah, a drama camp in the 2021 season. You're correct.
This is, this is a little bit like the, the, the heating, the heating system where, you know, I, I, I know that there are people who have sophisticated video equipment in the community and, and I wonder if you could, if they could appeal to their better, better angels and let, you know, get them to do some volunteer work for them.
So down that path, I'll support $300 and see if it's gonna be valuable to them, just like you did with the heating program. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
I'll do, I'll do 250.
Okay. All right. The next application before the board is from the Shield, and they are requesting $2,000 for veterans counseling. On this request, staff did reach out to both Veterans Services and Behavioral Health just to get a sense of prior existing relationships with this entity, as well as how services offered here might be similar to those that are provided by Health Services. It sounds like our Veterans Services team has not worked directly with this organization and pointed to some other groups locally that also provide these services. Health Services staff clarified that they currently are able to see any, any types of clients, including veterans, within a couple days. And as far as they know, the VA does not currently have a wait time in terms of being able to see clients. But both staff were definitely, were just trying to provide some context in terms of how this specific service ask might fit in with other services being provided.
So that, yeah, I mean, I'd like to talk to Mr. Anderson, the applicant, and understand more. Especially with our, you know, Veterans Village and all the work we're doing right now, just to see how it might all fit together.
Okay. And so maybe if, and depending on how the board wants to handle this, maybe this is one we can bring back in Q4 with a little bit of additional.
That's very possible. Does that sound?
That sounds good. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, in addition to kind of describing how they work with the other, or where they fit with the other veteran services organizations, I, I would add the Vet Center to that list and, you know, just another one for, to ask them about.
Okay.
I'll do 500 to them.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to the two requests that came in today and earlier this week. And I wanted to just give the board a little bit of time to digest those applications because I did just present you with them. So I think first I had on the list the transportation request from the Boys and Girls Club, and I'll just go ahead and pause and give the board a chance to, to digest that, that app.
I was looking at the Sun River Women's Club.
Okay, do you wanna handle that one?
So you think that is, is a fundraiser category? Is that what you're?
Yeah, that was how I was gonna.
Yeah, so that's why.
We have funds in there. We have $5,380, so we can definitely give them the money from there.
Yeah, so no, I was just making sure we're on the same page, so that, it's already kind of thinking of it as a fundraiser application.
Okay.
So Whitney, I can do $350 to the Hunger Prevention Coalition and to the Boys and Girls. I have to split my balance.
And I'm not watching my numbers at all. What's, so remaining, could you scroll that back down and touch it?
Yeah. Is that helpful?
Yeah.
Make that a little larger?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great if you could make it touch larger.
Okay, we've got fire and rescue coming in.
How's that?
Okay, so then a balance at the bottom of, at 3,400 is a quarterly balance. Okay. Well, and I'll do, I'll match those two amounts that Commissioner Dare just mentioned then. We'll see where we're going from there, I guess.
Can I, can I just ask, are you, are you two trying to kind of arrive at a, at a certain amount reserved for Q4 or?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's.
I divide mine up into four, and then I'm hoping that we can get a Q5 and, with a new funding, so if we have it. But that way, you know, it's not fair to give it all at the first, and you always want to, but to be fair for the year.
I'm outpacing myself already.
Well, it's, it's just a, so yeah, that's kind of.
You've got the, just be happy you got an extra thousand, so you're good.
Did you edit something? So it says 33 under his now.
I just reflected the additional $1,000.
Yeah, so that wasn't in there.
Just so that would help you.
Yeah, okay, good. So that helps.
Kind of estimate accurately.
Yeah, that wasn't in there originally.
Well, and so remember, Video Lottery's been shut down for months now, too. So there could be a crater in this fund that we're talking about in the future. Right now, there's a balance, but next, by the end of this year, there may be minimal income in this area.
Yeah, so I, I'd like to put 500 towards the Boys and Girls Club transportation and save all the support that I put into, you know, feeding, feeding the hungry into that Lepine Community Kitchen allocation.
Okay. Perfect. And then as Commissioner DeBohn mentioned, there is a fundraising request from the Sun River Women's Club, and that is in support of the Sun River Art Fair, which they are proposing to be a hybrid event for the coming year. And you do have a balance remaining of just over $5,000 in your fundraising section of the grant program.
So I know that the Sun River Women's Club is an organization that does fundraising, and that's truly what this would be for, amplifying their dollars. You hear about, in fact, I think Alan Flood said that Lepine Community Kitchen may be asking Sun River Women's Club for dollars for this vaccine clinic. You know, so I mean, they're, they're at that level, though, where they, sometimes they can come up with a, a good chunk of money for a great community need. So I would just propose maybe $2,000 instead of 2,500, just to leave kind of that 3,000-something balance.
And that's something we make a collective?
Yeah, cuz it's just one line item by itself.
I really like the, the fact that this kind of, this, this supports the, the arts community that is, you know, really suffered for lack of opportunities to share their, share their work with the community over the last year as well. So I, I would support the $2,000.
You'd support what?
Just $2,000, and that's what we did last year.
Actually, yes, we did last year, and then the year before, we did 1,500.
19 and 18, so we did not even do it last year.
Right.
$8,000?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Well, so, yeah, so now the.
Well, if we have any left over at the end, you know, with our next Q4, let's give them the other 500 if we do have any leftover. Because I agree with Commissioner Chang, the arts have been really devastated and it doesn't hurt to help them.
Okay, so what staff will do is we'll reflect, if the board wants to do that, we'll request that kind of as a secondary application for your Q4 consideration, and you can see what else comes in in Q4. Does that feel?
Yeah. So another opportunity here is, you know, this is the quarterly opportunity for people to put an application in unsolicited, follow the quarterly cycle. But, you know, if you're in, in the community and there's community something that's going on and it's like, man, I just wish we could come up with X right now, you could bring it in as a commissioner and just bring up the discussion sometime. Or if somebody here says, if I just had the extra 300 if you, from the X you gave me, whatever the numbers would be, we could have that discussion next week, just a quick other item, you know? So I mean, there's the authority to do that kind in here.
And is there an expectation of where, where we would be drawing those funds from?
Oh, well.
Is it, is it open? It's also.
This, yeah, this.
So we can bring something in, kind of.
Yeah, I mean, as a commissioner, I mean, you have the authority to ask, is, yeah.
Thank you.
So I think that completes today. I'll just leave this up on the board and confirm that these initial allocations look good to proceed and go ahead and go forward in communicating?
Yeah, kind of.
Perfect.
It's like it kind of hangs together. Commissioner Dares isn't up there right now, but.
It balanced.
She liked it.
I already know it balanced. It was the number I was striving for. I brought my calculator.
All that money she left in there.
No, I wanted to have something for the end.
She's gonna have a good fourth quarter.
There you go.
Well, at least, no, it's. Well, at least, no, it's going to be the same. It was the same amount for both this time and next time. So.
Thank you.
And I was really happy that we did the chaplain safety program. That was, I think, wasn't that done kind of offline or something anyway? So happy we were able to do that.
Okay, so that's the end of our published agenda. Are there other items? I didn't bring any other items. We do have executive session today. Anything else, just for the good of the order? Anything else, Commissioner?
Nope.
So at this time, we'll step into an executive session under ORS 1926602E, property negotiations, and 2H litigation. We'll take about a three-minute break to make sure we're disconnected on Zoom. 5:25 PM, Dave. There you go.
I was wrong on my guest.
Yeah, he was just walking, well, later, in case we go live here. Are we set? Yeah.
I'm waiting for it to, like, go live so we don't run into it.
Yeah, there may be a delay, or we may be live at a moment here.
Commissioners, the necessity for this is because we don't have our meetings open physically to the public at this point. In the past, when that was the case, we could come out of executive session and adjourn without having to fire back up the live stream. But since the only way the public can attend at this point is through the live stream, it's in order to properly adjourn is why the board has to come back into open session and get the live stream going, to simply adjourn at that point, because you can't adjourn straight from executive session.
Okay. So this is concluding our meeting now. We just completed two executive sessions, and we're going to look for a motion to proceed as discussed.
Do we need a motion?
I think so.
You could direct staff.
Oh, just direction? Okay.
Yeah, the only time a motion's really absolutely necessary is if it's not unanimous, and then you would potentially.
So we'll confirm. Yep. For the matters discussed, an executive session will proceed, ask for, to proceed as discussed. With that, meeting adjourned. Thank you.